Is this where you talk about South Limestone, Mayor?
It would be.
Okay.
But if you'll wait just a moment.
Okay.
Soon as I get a green light from our clerk, we'll proceed. So if everybody will stand by for just a moment.
Some people didn't get a chance to sign that. He grabbed it before everybody could sign.
All right. We're ready to proceed. And I have four individuals who've indicated a desire to speak on the South Limestone project. The first is Beth Hannah. So, Ms. Hannah, if you'd step to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
We have a little slideshow. Somebody has a clicker thing? I just found out I was doing this, so. I'm lucky when I have the visual aids. I'm Beth Hannah, and Hannah's online. This is just to show you all kind of what the project in the street looks like on limestone. This is one of the signs that, unfortunately, some of the signs have gotten removed and stolen and knocked over. And this is what traffic actually sees when they're coming into our area. If anybody's interested, it's a really interesting, it's kind of an obstacle course today to try to get up anywhere from High Street to Maxwell Street. So there's trenches, and this is in front of, beside Bombay Brazier, and unfortunately, Rip couldn't be here today. But he had to close his business down for a whole week because of this project. We've also lost one business. Underground Inc. had to relocate. And I do want to, I will commend ATS and that group because they really are trying to work with the business owners to make our businesses accessible. And it's not easy with people trying to get in your door, and there's trenches on both sides of the street and on your door. And so, anyway, you can just see what a massive amount of equipment and material and work that is going on right now. And we're living through it. Fortunately, High Street is now open. Tomorrow, Maxwell Street, the intersection closes, so that in itself will be another whole set of problems. So I think, from my point of view, I would really, really urge you all to see if there's any way that ATS and that group and the utility companies can speed this process up now. Now that we've gotten into it and we're about two months in, anything that can be done to hasten this will help us all because, as you can see, you can't even see some of the businesses. And it's really tough. Our whole livelihood depends on people walking in our door. We don't get a paycheck deposited in our bank account every two weeks. We have to have people come in the door. And when the door is not accessible and the businesses aren't seen, it's just really tough to get by. So, anyway, that's it. So that's my feeling. I really appreciate your all's support and the government center's support because they still order lunch for me every day. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Lisa Betts.
Hi. My name is Lisa Henley-Bettts. I'm the owner of Volta, the Irish import shop, and I've owned it for nearly eight years now. And as I'm sure everybody here knows, it's hard enough to run a small business. But with the construction, it's making it really hard to make ends meet. I've had a sale, done some coupons. I've brought my shop to a couple of festivals to help pay the bills, and that's helped me get this far. My shop is down 15 percent, and that's all with the extra work I've done. Looking ahead is just scary, trying to figure out a budget for Christmas, and are people going to come to my shop? And if so, are they going to be able to get there? Is there any way that we can speed this up by getting a second or third crew? Can the city help us out with advertising and more signage? Are driving by traffic no longer exists? And that's how 70 percent of my customers have heard about me in the future. People are intimidated about coming downtown anyway, and the construction is really increasing that intimidation. If you look at most of the merchants right now, you will see that most of us seem to have lost our spirit, and there's a sense of defeat about us. Please help us to keep our downtown businesses alive and therefore keeping downtown Lexington alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Kathy Stein.
Mayor, members of the council. I live in the neighborhood, not directly in the neighborhood, but on Transylvania Park. We generally have a lot of extra traffic when the students come back, but this year, it is the backups that have been caused by this are terrific. I was aware of it on that side. However, I was contacted by some of the business people who have businesses along here. And I went on a walking tour with them, and it was, the education that I got about the problems these businesses are having is devastating. Ms. Hannah has already talked about one business relocating. Just on the day that we were there, there were, I believe, 10 people had been laid off. It's been about two weeks ago. I suspect more people have been laid off. Obviously, that's not good for tax revenue. Some of these businesses are hanging on by their fingernails. And it's a wonderful idea to do those improvements. But I believe the frustration that these folks have, and I believe rightly so, is that they were not given enough time to prepare for this, to make alternate plans so that they could avoid some of the huge problems that they have. And now, they need this project speeded up. I believe Mr. Graves, who is here and will speak, has a number of observations about speeding up the project and how that would help all businesses concerned. It's going to be a great project when it's finished, but it needs to be finished more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Graves?
Thank you. My name is Joe Graves, and I own the McDonald's on South Limestone. And thankfully, I have other restaurants that are helping us through this devastation of this construction by absorbing some of our crew. And thank goodness for Central Bank and a line of credit and some other restaurants to be able to help the negative cash flow that we're experiencing because of this issue. I understand that construction is messy. I understand that construction is disruptive. And I know that it's going to be nice when it's over. But I hear elected officials saying all the time that they have some major roles as elected officials. And one of those roles is to provide for the safety of their constituents and the citizens. Should a citizen at any of our establishments or living in the area have a fire or a medical emergency while this is going on, they're in grave jeopardy. Another role that I hear elected officials talk about is being efficient with taxpayers' money. Is $4 million profit to the company that's leading this effort efficient use of taxpayer Being efficient in performing services is one shift for work of this depth and breadth and magnitude and devastation that you've heard us sampling of here today. Efficient for the businesses, the residences, and the citizen, and the city itself? Is it efficient? I would say it's not. Another role is to protect the minority. The minority of the businesses there that are losing their life savings, their kids' college educations, their leases on their buildings, or their businesses, lost sales, lost customers, relocations, people just don't want to go near the area because of the inconvenience and the construction. And the minority did not get a voice. I don't care what anybody says, the minority did not get a voice in the planning of this project. So we need you all to please walk the talk of providing safety of the citizens, efficiency of taxpayers' money, and protecting minorities. And amend your contract to go to three shifts. The extra money can come from the $4 million, and that's still a great profit. I'll take $4 million in a year, okay? There's a lot of wasted time in the mornings gearing up. I see the time, Mayor. Most of our folks didn't even use 90 seconds.
I make a motion. We suspend the rules and give him an extra three minutes. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to extend the rules to give Mr. Graves an additional three minutes. All in favor, please say aye. Those no, you have three additional minutes.
Thank you very much for that. I hope to not have to take that long because I want to be respectful of your time. But speaking of time, there's a lot wasted in the mornings as they gear up for the workday. And then there's the breaks, there's the lunches and the breaks, and then there's the gear down at the end of the day to get ready to go home. And it would be much more efficient if they could work consistently. The arguments of, "Well, we can't have too many people down there. They'll be tripping over each other." I'm sorry, if I can build a McDonald's in 100 days, we can put in a road in six months and replace the sewer. Vice Mayor Gray, I'm sure you've had a great experience in dealing with construction projects, and we've seen with surgical precision, three shifts working, and people aren't tripping over each other. The project's underway. The devastation has occurred. We understand it's messy. What we're asking for is for you to be efficient and amend your contract. I would request that you make a motion to amend your contract and go to three shifts. And please don't study it to death and cause the death of more businesses, and then the project's almost over, so then what's the point? We need emergency action to go to three shifts to speed this up. We all just want it to be over. We'll be glad when it's finished so that we can get on with our lives. And that's a very efficient way to be able to provide for the safety of our citizens because in seven months, and you can't get somewhere and they can't get a fire truck or an ambulance in, we could be done by then if we go to three shifts. Thank you.
Reese Reinhold? Mr. Reinhold?
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Reese Reinhold, 244 South Ashland. I have a daughter who lives on South Limestone at 249 South Lime. And I'm interested in this project, and there is no doubt that this project has greatly impacted everyone up and down the street. And a few of the businesses you've heard from tonight have been impacted more than all the rest. And I feel for them, and I wish there was more we could do for them. I think that it is, everyone will be glad when this project is over and we can get this thing completed and get South Limestone to what it will be when the project is completed. And over 30 years with working with the city, contractors, and utility companies, I was skeptical as anyone about how this process was going to unfold. And I've been shocked. It is, the cooperation and the organization of this project has been amazing to me. The mayor and the council should be proud of the efforts of your Commissioner Mike Webb, of George Milligan, Harold Tate, along with Harry Burchett and ATS, and all the subcontractors. The attitude of this group has always been, "How can we help?" I've attended every task force meeting, and they have gone out of their way to answer every issue that was possibly connected with the construction of this project. I think this project should be a project of the way every project should be handled in the city as far as how it's completed. I think the project is, by all means, ahead of schedule. Some estimates of up to 30 days. They completed the intersection at Avenue of Champions several days before they said they were going to do it. Plus, they also did an additional amount of work with the wire company so that we would not have to go back in that intersection to close it for another three weeks. They completed High Street a week, almost a week ahead of schedule. And I think they've done just about everything they could do to make this project move along. Having residents on the street that live roughly 20 to 25 feet from the edge of the road, having construction going on all night is not something that I'd be in favor of. And I think we'd have a lot of complaints from the residents if we tried to do that. But anything we could do to help the businesses along there would be greatly appreciated. And I would hope that when we do other projects in the city, that this would serve kind of as a pilot project because this is the way construction projects should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person I have who's indicated a desire to speak on these issues. Does anyone else wish to do so? All right. Let's move along then.
Actually, we do have one more that was not able to sign in before this got taken up, and I will take 30 seconds.
That's why I asked a minute ago if anybody else wished to speak. You'll step to the microphone. You'll have three minutes.
Okay. I appreciate the comments that the last gentleman made about the positive things, and I'm sure there are some. But in relation to the businesses on limestone, which is what I'm connected with, those areas, he talked about his daughter's not losing her life savings. These people are struggling to keep their doors open and wonder what they're going to do to eat and drink and have a place to live. And living on South Ashland's not directly being in the middle of this, and that's not really, you know, where the heart of this matter is, I don't believe.
Ma'am, I need to get your name and address.
Lori Vought.
And your address, please, ma'am.
I'm sorry, 357 South Limestone.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. We have a docket to approve this afternoon. Is there a motion to approve it?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Crosby and a second by Councilmember Gordon to approve the docket. I understand there are a couple of amendments. Councilmember Blues?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to place on the docket for Thursday, September 17, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the urban county government to execute a location parking agreement with Fast Track Productions, Inc. for parking at the LF UCG training pad for the sum of $1,500. So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Blues and a second by Councilmember Crosby. Any discussion of that proposed amendment? All then in favor of amending the docket by adding that item of business, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to place on the docket for the September 17, 2009 council meeting, a resolution ratifying the Department of Law's execution on behalf of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government of a settlement agreement and any other necessary settlement documents in Kentucky Public Service Commission case number 2009-00141 pertaining to the rates of Columbia Gas of Kentucky Incorporated. So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lane, a second by Councilmember Crosby to amend the docket by adding that resolution. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gordon?
Yes, Mayor. Can someone give us some detail about what this is?
I know there was a memo distributed to the council yesterday. Mr. Askew, can you fill us in on the details of the Columbia Gas settlement?
Mayor, if we might defer that. Mr. Barbary is on a conference call right now till about 3:45, and he's the one that's been involved with that.
All right. Go ahead.
I will make a motion then, since it does involve rates, and I think an explanation would be good.
Yes.
I move to just remove it temporarily from the new business, or from the docket until we can.
The motion is to table the amendment to the docket.
Yes, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's non-debatable. Those in favor of tabling the amendment to the docket, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. We're now ready then to vote on the docket as now amended. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor then of approving the docket, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mayor, I had a question about one of the items on the docket. May I make an inquiry on that at this time?
Yes.
It had to do with the changed order on the Lyric Theater. See what the number on that is. It's, I guess, item O.
Are you talking about a new business?
I'm sorry. You're right.
We're getting close. Let's move on to item three. We do not have a summary to, we do not have a summary to approve. Tell you what, now may be a good time to go ahead and invite Mr. Barbary to the podium to address the settlement with Columbia Gas.
I apologize. Ironically enough, I'm on a conference call right now with the rest of the group, trying to make sure the settlement goes through. Generally, what's being proposed is a little more than half of what they've asked for. The impact directly to the urban county government is frankly de minimis because we only have about 100 different gas accounts, and most of them are commercial in nature. And essentially, the rate increase is primarily going to be a monthly flat fee on your minimum monthly bill. For those types of accounts, it's about $2 a month per account. The residential impact is approximately $3.63 per month for your typical residential account. There's no differential in the cost of the gas. Everything is related to a flat fee cost. The other thing that's going to happen in this, although I can't give you an exact amount, is I believe they'll get approval to do an accelerated main replacement, which will be an additional rider on your bill, which will allow them to replace the existing system more quickly than what they have been done traditionally. They have some safety issues with respect to the age of their pipes and stuff, so.
Any further questions for Mr. Barber?
Yeah, I do. Could you just explain the, how the charge for natural gas is, you know, added to the customer's bill?
Well, generally, most of the gas cost is just a pass-through, and that gets approved like on a quarterly basis by the Public Service Commission outside of a rate case. That's most of a gas bill. And then they have some of their administrative costs in doing that in what's called the monthly flat fee. So what's impacted as a result of this is what you would pay as a monthly minimum.
Councilmember James?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Barber, is there, you know, a lot of times in our work, we have to have hearings. We can't just add things to a docket for first reading for that week. Does that prevail in this case, that we don't have to have any type of public hearing discussing?
No, our only relationship in this matter is by intervention. They have a hearing process at the Public Service Commission, even though this has been, it's scheduled for a hearing starting tomorrow. Even though there's a proposed settlement, it still has to be approved by the Public Service Commission, and the public will still be afforded the opportunity to speak about the rate increase at the Public Service Commission hearing tomorrow. So this doesn't trump any of that. What this is, is an agreement among the parties that have intervened, that they are in agreement that a stipulated recommendation for settlement should be brought forward to the Public Service Commission.
So we make an agreement before we hear from the public about their view on the agreement that we've already made? Just doesn't seem like it's really inclusive of what the public would really want. What are they having the hearing about?
The, they will, the Public Service Commission will entertain public comment. They will not treat someone speaking from the public as being a dispositive issue in the case. You have to be a party in the case to really have your viewpoints considered by the Public Service Commission.
Okay.
But they do take public comment at the case.
So at what role did we have as far as, I guess it's you are the person on behalf of urban county government?
Well, it is now, yes. It was not me at the beginning of this, but it is at this point in the case.
Okay. And so what did you tell them about how we felt about the increase?
I told them it would be my recommendation that the council should adopt this particular recommended settlement because I think it is the best deal that we could end up getting even if we had a hearing on this.
Okay.
That's what it's based on. I have to operate, I do have to have you all's approval to do this, but in this type of case, we don't, in a gas case in particular, we don't really have independent issues from the other parties. We are simply a gas customer, along with a lot of other gas customers, and we don't sponsor testimony or anything like that. So we really don't have a position independent from, for instance, the Attorney General in a case like this. So our goal is to make sure that our, other than generally the rate not being too high, our goal is to make sure that our particular accounts that we have the most of are not inequitably treated. And in this case, the rate increase does not inequitably treat the types of accounts we have, and this is much less than what was being proposed as a percentage for the residential customer.
Is the flat rate the same for all residential customers throughout every entity that's involved in the negotiation? So is it the same? Is Winchester involved?
Yes. Whatever residential customer pays will be the same as, the increase will be the same to them as a result of this, yes.
The increase is the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Your gas bill, I mean, your gas bill fluctuates depending on how much you use and some other factors that come in. There are some things on your gas bill that actually reduce how much you pay on it. And depending on those variables, your gas bill may be more or less than somebody else.
So if Lexington has less gas users than Winchester, it's still, the increase is still the same?
Yes.
Or, okay.
The rate increase is exactly the same to all of their customers.
Okay.
As far as the, across the different classes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lawless, I have you listed as desiring to speak on this issue. Is that correct? Okay. All right. Councilmember Gordon?
But, Mr. Barbary, before you go away on this issue, so is this, just for clarification, so council's approval of this is similar to when council approved increasing the water rates? There are certain parties who have to approve that before it goes forward. Is that what we're doing?
We are a party to this case, so in order to have a full settlement recommendation, we are required to also be a party to the settlement. I would have no basis to recommend to you all that you don't enter into this.
But what I'm asking is different. Is this, and maybe I haven't totally understood it, if... it, if we approve this, we are basically giving our stamp of approval to the agreed raise in rates? Is that true?
That's a way of looking at it, yes. But the Public Service Commission is ultimately the one that has to approve the rates, but we would be saying that based upon the fact that this is a little more than half of what they've requested, it seems like a fair resolution to this particular rate matter.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Barber? Councilmember Beard?
Generally, don't they ask for more, knowing that it's going to get cut by the PSC? I mean, it seems, it seems like I see it that way, whether that's intentional or not.
I think it depends on the case, but if you're asking the result, the result normally is between zero and what they ask for.
How do we approve something when we really have not the authority to do so? It doesn't seem like it makes any sense. If we say no, then what happens?
If you said no, there would not be a full settlement. They would proceed with a limited rate case, which they're going to do anyway, because the PSC has to be comfortable with the settlement agreement, and it would be, it would be a very interesting case at that point in time. I don't know that it doesn't open up the door to have a lot of other issues brought up. It probably maybe going forward puts us in a bad light with respect to participating in some future rate cases, that kind of stuff, but...
In other words, the guns to our head.
Well, I just can't tell you that there would be a reason we wouldn't take this settlement. We don't, we did not, we don't have a particularly unique position in this case. We did not sponsor any testimony in this particular case, and this is the primary driver on a case like this. There are some utility cases where we do have a unique interest. The electricity cases, we have a unique interest in the streetlights, for instance, because we're the ones that are buying 99% of them. In a water case, we have a unique interest in the fire hydrants, because we're buying all of them, all of the public fire hydrants. In a case like this, we don't have anything unique about the gas, so pretty much what the Attorney General is recommending is what we would normally go along with in a case like this.
Well, I guess where I'm coming from is that, you know, we beat our chest and say, no new taxes, no new taxes, but PS, we have a sanitary sewer fee, and we've got a stormwater fee coming, and we have a water company rate increase, and now a gas rate increase. And the net result is that the public out here is getting hosed pretty good in the aggregate. And that just, that part concerns me. I, you know, I obviously don't know how we can vote against it, but it's, it seems like we're just going through the motions. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Henson?
Thank you, David. When was the last increase for Columbia Gas? Do you know?
I would have to look, but I believe the last time they, it's my recollection that the last time they asked for one, they actually didn't get it.
Oh, really?
Yes.
It makes it more likely for them to get it if it has our blessing?
Well, I think they have a much stronger case this time than they had the last time they filed one.
And just to clarify, the increase is based upon your usage?
No, you pay a minimum flat fee amount to have a gas hookup. The impact of this is going to be that, that amount's going to go up. Your gas usage is based upon a factor, a multiplier factor, and they simply take the cost of gas and multiply it by the multiplier factor. And they have to have, and they're just, they're, the gas, the gas cost is more or less a direct pass-through. Your actual consumption of the gas.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Feigl?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. I thought I heard you say that the PSC doesn't really like the settlement agreement.
No, the PSC has to go through a process to make sure they're comfortable that this settlement agreement makes sense. They have people that fully weigh the evidence themselves that are on staff, and if for some reason they don't think that this is what a case like this should be settled for, they won't, they won't sign off on settlement agreements.
So, I mean, Columbia Gas actually asks for a lot more money, and the PSC doesn't like the settlement agreement, so what are they looking for to lower it even further?
I wouldn't say they don't like settlement agreements. They have to feel like this is a result...
No, I mean this one. They don't like this one, correct?
No, I didn't, if I, if you heard me say that, I stand corrected.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard you say. Okay. I thought I heard you say they didn't like this settlement agreement. Okay. I was just trying to see why the rate case was going to go further.
No, we will have a limited rate proceeding starting tomorrow, where they will consider this stipulated recommended agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember James?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Barber, you said we don't really have a unique interest in this, and you're speaking as, and then you mentioned a couple of things that were Urban County Government expenses, that, things that we would have had a particular interest in. And I just wonder, are we there advocating on behalf of the citizens of Lexington and what they would end up paying?
To some extent. We do both. We do both, but what happens with respect to the citizen interest in a case like this is the Attorney General is tasked by statute to do the same thing. So normally, we're in lockstep with them on the citizen issue, and then in a case like this, you actually had representatives from the low-income, you had, I'm going to get the acronym wrong, you had Jack Birch's group as a party to the case signing off on this, and you also had some interest from the AARP and some other groups like that that represent other types of groups that have an interest in how much the gas is.
Okay. And go back to what you talked about, about the hookup fee, that this is what this affects. So if I live in a gas serviced house right now, and I move out, and then somebody new comes in, that's when the gas hookup fee, to explain what that is?
If you're hooked up, you pay a minimum monthly fee just to have the gas service.
Okay.
That's what's going to rise as a result of this.
Do you know what that amount is?
I'd have to look. I, it's...
Did you say $3 a month or something would be the increase?
I'm going to say it's more like $12, and it's going up to 15 is what's going on.
Okay. And then you said that also that we didn't have, I forgot the word you used, but it was like we were, we were, we were around the table talking about, but we didn't have a presenting argument or presenting, what word is it that you used?
We didn't sponsor any witnesses. We don't, what happens is if you have a unique position in the case, and you're going to take a position outside of the other witnesses, you sponsor testimony, you hire an expert witness to present your position in the case. In this case, what this case was generally about was the rate of return and how much money they're justified in getting overall. The distribution of the costs between the different rate accounts was not a huge issue. So the Attorney General hires expert witnesses that contest what the, what the gas company's doing, and we were pretty much in agreement with the positions of those expert witnesses were.
Okay. We as the, as the Urban County Government?
Well, hopefully, yes, but the Department of Law was, thought that what the Attorney General's witnesses were saying was reasonable in this case.
Okay. Where do folks go for this, for the limited rate proceeding? Where, you said that they can come and talk?
The rate case will open tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock in Frankfurt at the Public Service Commission.
Okay.
And I don't know the address. It's Sauer Boulevard, which, from Lexington, I'm trying to remember the, well, the mayor knows the street.
Okay. But it's the public, if we looked up Public Service Commission, it would be there?
Nine o'clock, yes.
Are letters and emails admitted into?
They are required, well, I think they'll take those things into consideration. They were required to publish the notice several times in the newspaper, the gas company was, that they were going to have the rate case, and that there would be a public hearing at.
Not everybody reads the paper, so I'm trying to give other people the opportunity that don't get the Herald Leader to learn about it.
And I believe at the beginning of it, although it may not have had the date on it exactly, they send it out in your bill as well.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I will talk more about this probably if it does get on as a docket item, but I think that it's quite interesting that, it'll be interesting to watch, because as a lot of folks support it, the decrease in the Urban Services Fund, this actually increases that backup and actually probably more. So the $24 a year that some people were going to save because of that decrease, now you're out more money. So let's see, it'll be interesting to see around the horseshoe if we really want to save constituents' money, if we will support this or not. It's very interesting. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Barber? If the council is so inclined, a motion to take that item from the table would be in order. I have a motion and second to take the proposed amendment to the docket off the table. Those in favor of taking that item from the table, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, no. The motion carries with Councilmember James dissenting. We're now ready to once again discuss the proposed amendment, which is now on the floor for discussion. Seeing done, we will proceed to vote. Those in favor of amending the docket to include a resolution ratifying a settlement agreement in connection with a rate case filed by Columbia Gas, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, no. Okay, let's vote electronically, please. Those in favor of the proposed amendment, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Motion fails by vote of seven to six. All right. We don't have a summary to approve. We do have some budget amendments. Is there a motion to approve the budget amendments?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ellinger and a second by Councilmember Gordon to approve the budget amendment. Are there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Those then in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. We have some new business items to attend to. Is there a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Stenett, second by Councilmember Gordon to approve the items of new business. Any discussion? Councilmember Mayr? I'm sorry, I didn't, Councilmember Crosby?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on Q, please. In the body of Q, this may just be a typo, but might need clarification. It says that the agreement for professional services is for $39,000, but if you turn back to the letter, it says the annual cost is not to exceed $36,000. I don't know. Anybody wants to clarify that, which one it is?
Did you say item Q?
Item Q.
An authorization of an agreement for professional services?
It says $39,000 in Q, but the actual cost on the letter on page, I think it's 50, says $36,000. I'm trying to find out if there's a $3,000 difference in which one it is. Is it 36 or 39?
Item Q doesn't deal with the lyric, is my confusion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait. I'm on, maybe I'm on the wrong thing. I'm on new business.
Right. Item Q deals with...
I'm looking at professionals.
Actually, she's not asking a question about the lyric. She's asking about Simon and Company.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Okay, thank you.
I believe $39,000 is accurate. If you look on page 50, I just glanced at this really quickly. Under compensation, the, it's a cost not to exceed $36,000, and then if you read down a little bit more, I think it says that other expenses could be incurred up to $3,000 for a total of 39.
So... So we pay them $3,000 a month, plus they can, an extra $3,000 for miscellaneous, not to exceed, I guess, they can go over that $3,000 if needed for miscellaneous things, correct?
They could not. That's correct.
Okay. I guess, I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the value of this. I know we get reports kind of monthly from them. I guess $39,000. I'm just struggling with the value of $39,000.
I think I'll let Mayor Newberry answer this one.
And maybe, yeah, maybe, I mean, all I get, maybe from my point of view, all I get is the monthly report, but I guess as far as following grants and what I see coming through, I don't know why our, well, our current staff is not capable really of doing that. So there may be more to it that I'm just not understanding, but maybe, maybe you could enlighten me more.
In addition to what's set forth in the contract, I would simply note that Mr. Simon and folks in his firm have been working with us in connection with the Recovery Act initiative this year specifically. We currently have been on the receiving end of somewhere between 20 and 25 million in designated grants, and we have competitive grants. Mr. Kelly, I guess somewhere in the neighborhood of another 60 or 70 million on top of that is at ballpark. So we have a very significant series of issues in Washington right now. I've had occasion to work with a number of people in Washington. Mr. Simon's fee is very reasonable by any Washington government affairs firm standard, and on top of that, the quality of his work has been just absolutely superb. So in my book, it would be of great value to our community if it were substantially in excess of this amount.
I think your other question, Councilmember Crosby, was why can't our current staff handle this? I would answer that by saying that Mr. Simon is on the ground in DC on a daily, daily basis and is able to go to the various meetings. Ned Sheehy is in contact with Lynn on a regular basis and makes trips up there with the mayor and other council members and representatives of Lexington from time to time. But Ned is able to get to Frankfurt within a 30 minutes' drive, where getting to DC obviously will take a car ride or days, few hours, plane flight. So having someone on the ground there, ears and eyes and everything else, is very valuable to us.
Is it, I guess, is it, are governments comparable in our size and our budgets? Is it, is it, I guess, the norm for them to have lobbying firms in Washington DC, to hire lobbying firms? Which, I mean, what percentage would you say, or?
I don't know. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I don't know what the percentage is, but I certainly know it's common. And in fact, we became aware of Lynn Simon through Mayor Abramson's office. I believe, Mayor Newberry, you might have a little bit more information on that.
That is correct, and Lexington has a significant number of issues in Washington these days, particularly with the Recovery Act, but outside the Recovery Act as well that has made this to be some of the best money I think we spend. In terms of the return on our investment, I can't think of any place where we spent $40,000 and been on the receiving end of as many positive things happening in Washington. I feel very strongly about it.
I'm comfortable with your answers, but I'm still not sure that I'm comfortable with us spending this money right now. Thank you very much.
Let's see. Vice Mayor Gray wants to address this specific issue, so let me go ahead.
If anybody else wants to, you go ahead, then you're, okay. I'm just going to say, Mayor, I appreciate that you have the confidence in Mr. Simon. I've been to several meetings, and I frankly, I have to just say this, I've never heard anybody talk more and say less than that felt. I mean, I just have, you know, so if he is doing this commendable a job, you know, my instinct... you know, my instincts do not follow that, but I've been wrong, and I accept that.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I also had questions about this because, if my memory serves me correctly, the only report I get is the Washington Letter, which is about legislation in Washington DC. And I think if we, you mentioned return on investment. Most investors get a report on their investment. And I think it would, I was not aware that council members have been going on trips with Mr. Simon or to see Mr. Simon. So I would feel much more comfortable about this investment if we got a true report as to what he actually has done for this money, other than, besides sending the Washington Letter, which is about federal regulation. I mean, I'm really excited to know that he's gotten us all these grants, for instance. So if there would be some way that we could get a regular quarterly report or something that would enumerate what we're getting for our money, that would be really helpful.
We can certainly do that. And Ms. Ray Bowe, if you would mention that to Mr. Sheehy and make arrangements for us to get something routinely from Mr. Simon, I'm sure that won't be a problem.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blues?
Are we finished with?
Is there anything else on that particular issue? All right, Councilmember James and Councilmember Lawless, and we'll come back around then.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. One thing to mention to Mr. Sheehy as well is about two years ago, we met with him, and he, we were asking how we as council members could stay up to date with the legislation that was going on, and he mentioned some kind of software that could be loaded onto our computers that the commissioners had that they could give their input about legislation. And he was to get that installed on our computers, and I don't think any of us have it yet. So that was kind of this way everybody was able to make notes on particular legislation. And that's the way he kind of, because we asked, how do you know what to advocate for in federal government beyond just the mayor's office, but as council members, some particular things? And we filled out these sheets of things that we were particularly interested about. He's responded to some of those early on, not in the past, I don't know, nine months or so, but the software was something that we could have interacted with everybody. So if you could check into that, too.
I'd be glad to. I'm not offhand familiar with the software that you're talking about, but we'll check on that. Ms. Ray Bowe, if you'd follow up on that issue.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lawless?
Thank you, Mayor. How were they selected? I mean, did you interview other lobbying firms?
About two, maybe two and a half years ago, we started exploring some way to monitor what was going on in the Washington area. We did explore some other alternatives. After checking around, it appeared as though Mr. Simon's firm was one that was most effective from a cost standpoint. Had a great reputation dealing with cities' issues. His practice is confined to representing cities. And so it is typical that he's aware of what's going on in homeland security issues as it relates to police and fire departments. He's generally familiar with the whole array of urban issues that are there. He shares office space with the individual that represents the city of Louisville, and they were the means by which we became acquainted with him. And I think if you ask folks in Washington who've had the occasion to deal with him, they would tell you he's very well-respected.
I guess I have problems with a no-bid contract. I mean, there are enough lobbyists in DC, you can't sling a cat without hitting one. And how do we know? How's it measured that he's the reason we got these grants?
Well, I don't want to convey the impression he is the reason that we got those grants. He is a person who is on the ground there, who can make available information to us about our eligibility for the grants, and can, who has facilitated our having an awareness of the grant opportunities that exist. Now, clearly, a lot of work has gone on by people here who actually submit the grant applications. But I think it's safe to say that he has... He's been an integral part of our efforts to obtain and receive funding from Washington on a number of different levels.
Well, I share concerns about, again, a no-bid contract and without having anything with the Washington update once a month. And so that's what I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on that particular topic? All right, Councilmember Blues?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some questions about B, and particularly the deletion of the street tree fee. So perhaps Commissioner Webb or Director Crowe could help me out with that. B?
Yes, what was your question?
Well, the question is the deletion in the proposed ordinance of the required street tree fee. And the explanation here is that these fees, the grading permit fee and the $100 street tree fee, which developers pay for each street tree to be planted, these fees are no longer applicable to the Division of Building Inspection. So I just want to find out where we're going here. And it's a particular concern because I have some subdivisions in my district where the obligation on part of developers to plant street trees has not been fulfilled. So I wonder what the rationale is and what the effect's going to be.
Well, first, those fees aren't, are no longer applicable to Division of Building Inspection. The grading permit fee is now authorized to be collected by the Division of Engineering for grading permits. We no longer collect it, therefore, it's being removed from our fee schedule. The street tree fee, that fee was last collected, I believe, in 1985 or '86. We have not collected it since, when the subdivision regs were modified about that time to remove the authorization for street tree that that fee was based on. That was replaced with language in the subdivision regs, which required a $10 fee per street tree identified on the plaits and collected at the time the plaits for property was approved. For whatever reason, that fee just was left laying on our fee schedule since 1986 or '87, when those regs were changed. But we had not collected it since then. So it's, it has no authorization behind it. It's just there. The program that it actually supported was abolished when they changed the, again, changed the subdivision regs in, I believe, '86 or '87.
So really, this is cleanup?
Yes. Exactly.
But at the same time, it leaves us with an issue. And I think, and that is how we are going to assure that street trees are planted in new subdivisions. And I think that's something that, you know, that we do need to discuss.
Well, this doesn't change the requirement to plant the street trees. That's still there under the current subdivision regulation requirements that require and mandate that street trees, and that they are identified on the plaits as to where and what kind are planted. As I say, this fee was originally part of a program that was done away with that required a $100 fee to be paid, which ostensibly was to be used to plant the trees if they weren't planted by the developer. If they were planted by the developer, then that fee was refunded. Again, that program was removed from the sub regs, and I don't have the exact date, but I believe it was around '86 or '87. This fee portion, which is in the code of ordinances, was simply bypassed and just left there. But there was never, it wasn't collected, again, hasn't been collected in my tenure with the Division of Building Inspection, and I've been here 20-some years.
So the developer still has the obligation?
Absolutely. The developer is still obligated to plant the street trees. The, we're also, it's now being looked at as a way to incorporate the requirement, what would be a cost of placing those trees. We're looking at with the Division of Engineering, including that in some of their bonding requirements for subdivisions. So the same bond that they assures that they're going to do the final black topping and that they'll do the sidewalks, but also include money for street trees. So if they fail to plant them, then the bond money could be used to plant them. We're working on that with the Division of Engineering to get that incorporated into a bond, into their bonding authority.
Would that require an ordinance?
My understanding at this point is I don't think it requires an ordinance change. It might require amendment to some text, possibly in the subdivision regs, to actually indicate that that money would be put into that. Again, we're looking at that. I have a meeting next week with Engineering to discuss this in further depth.
I think that's a really critical issue because, you know, as you say, the developer still has the obligation, but the problem has been that that obligation has not been adequately enforced, and...
Well, we've run into situations, certainly in the last few years, we've had developers and builders go bankrupt. At that point, our ability to get that done is extremely limited. With a bond issue, the money would be there in the bond.
I understand that that is an issue, and you're right. It seems clear that we need to have that assurance upfront in the form of money that can be then used if the obligation is not fulfilled.
Yes, I agree.
I think some other council members have some questions on this. Thank you very much.
Councilmember James?
I do have a comment about this. I am the council member sitting on the Tree Board. And this fee came up as our Tree Board Chair, Karen Angelussee. I think you all know her. She's presented to us before. She was doing, we've been doing research on how we can really utilize our urban forestry division. Once they were given that citation ability, we are now, I mean, we're doing street tree inventories. You know, the Emerald Ash Bore was very important. It's a very active, from what members from previous years have said, it's the most active this group has ever been. So Karen went and pulled every regulation and every document she could find on our books regarding trees and street trees. And she uncovered this fee that no one had ever talked about. And we brought it up and mentioned it, and I think the representative of Building Inspection was there and said, "Well, we don't collect it." And we kind of got to the bottom of, there was a particular administration that was in, and that mayor at that time decided to not collect the fee. And he gave down an order that said, "You're not going to collect the fee. We're just, we're not going to have developers pay this fee anymore." And so the intention was that if the developer did not pay it, or did not plant, we would then have that money to be able to plant the tree, which we talk about our tree canopy. We know for water quality and quantity that tree canopies are very important, and for air and all kinds of other things. So as we, as a Tree Board, started talking about this, we, I think Building Inspections, this was their solution, was to bring forward, just to remove the language. Well, we researched some newer data henceforth, the Management Partners Audit, which actually gave a recommendation to create a street tree fund. And we thought, bingo. We have the mechanism. We've got the language already for a street tree fund. Maybe it's not appropriate where, who's collecting the money and where that sits right now, but let's just redirect that fund to an area where we could actually support our urban forestry. And if you remember during the budget time, we were strapped for cash. We, when we were handed the budget, there was nothing in there for these ancillary services for forestry. We found, we finally all passed a budget that included some cost-share programming and such, but we were scraping the bottom of the barrel to try to support our street trees. We can, it has been an issue of, they're supposed to be able to plant, but our urban foresters will tell you, "They don't have the manpower." Because why? Because they don't have the money. Because why? Because they don't get any of this street tree fund money, and we don't allocate any money to them in the budget. So many of us on the Tree Board felt like, maybe this is an opportunity. I'm not going to support this. I'll put it on for a vote, I guess, but I won't be voting in favor of it because here's the answer to Management Partners' recommendation of creation of a street tree fund. And we've talked about that $100 and think, you know, we need to equate it to what a planting would actually be. Can you get a tree for $100 that would be a qualified street tree? We don't know for sure, but we need an opportunity to maybe talk about this. I would even entertain a motion to table this until we hear back from maybe this bonding thing they're talking about, or whatever, or until you hear back from the Tree Board, because we are working on a way to utilize this fund for a street tree fund and to redirect that. But we all know it's easier to remove a law than it is to get something added back on. So I would ask council members to consider leaving this on the books at this moment. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Beer?
Dewey? Tell me a little bit about the residential paving. What does that include? Does that include buckled sidewalks that a street tree is pushed up? That might be only six feet long?
No, the paving permit fee does not include sidewalks. That's done under a different type of program. The paving only includes things such as a driveway and your required parking space or additional parking spaces that you would put in, in compliance with the zoning ordinance. What we're asking for there, that was on, those fees reflecting of that were increased a few years ago to set minimum charges for permits. Unfortunately, the one on residential paving did not, wasn't included to get a minimum fee charge. Currently, we have to issue permits that sometimes amount to 50 cents or so for issuing of a paving permit. We do not, they do not even pay for the cost of administrative time for issuing that because there's no minimum. The cost per square foot is so small, I believe it's on the order of 6 cents per square foot, so we end up with ridiculously small $2 and $3 and $4 permits at times.
Okay, I was just curious about that, and I thank you for the answer. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Blues?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that this is, so it can be kind of complicated because what we're trying to do is, or what the attempt here is in amending this ordinance is to clean up a vestigial requirement, but my inclination would be to keep the $100 fee in and then work from there to make sure it's collected and used. So I move to amend Section 3 by restoring the requirement of the $100 fee per required street tree. So I'll move.
Second?
I have a motion and second to amend Section 3 to retain the $100 fee. And I suppose, Councilmember Blues, I need your guidance. So are you talking about page 26 of the packet?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
And I take it what we would be interested in doing is just deleting Section 3 entirely, so it stays in?
Yes, I would restore the deleted text.
All right. So the motion is to amend the new business items, new business item B on page 26 of the packet to delete Section 3 entirely. And the effect of that would be to leave the $100 street tree fee in the code of ordinances.
And that is correct. And that is correct. And I, you know, we do need to, you know, to be able then to, if this motion is passed and the ordinance as amended is passed, then we have to be able to collect it. And...
And so, are you talking about making some change in the wording of what you've proposed, or is that just an issue to be addressed at a later time?
Well, I was thinking of it as an issue to be addressed at a later time, but that's the intent here, is not just to restore the language, but to make sure that we collect this fee.
All right. Any discussion on Councilmember Blues' amendment? Councilmember Lane?
Yes, sir. Would you just restate what that is now after all that discussion so I'm not confused?
On page twenty-six of the packet, the proposed amendment is to delete Section 3 in its entirety, and the effect of that would be to leave in place the street tree fee. Yes? Well, Section 3 of this, of page twenty-six presently contains a change in the ordinance. And so, what we're doing is taking Section 3 out entirely so the ordinance stays the way it is, and the end result is the street tree fee remains at a hundred dollars. Correct?
That's correct. In other words, we're restoring Section 5-31.
And my point is it hasn't been taken out to be restored yet. That's what this is proposing to do. So, if we take out Section 3, I think we're in good shape.
Yes.
All right. Everybody clear on where we are? The motion is to amend page twenty-six but deleting Section 3. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. All right. Anything further? I think then we're ready to vote on the original motion to approve the new business item.
Let me, Mayor.
Councilmember Lane?
I'm sorry, you're...
Are we ready to vote on the motion to approve the new business item? All right. Those in favor of approving the new business items, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Commissioner Askew. Councilmember Stinnan.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we go into closed session pursuant to C.R.S. sixty-one dot eight one zero one C for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
Second.
Have a motion to go into closed session for purposes of considering pending litigation. Any discussion? All in, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Is there a motion that we return to open session?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Blues and a second by Councilmember Ellinger that we return to open session. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a report from the Services Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Service Committee met on September first. All members were present, and we were called to order at one o'clock. We had two issues that we dealt with. The first issue was the slaughtering of livestock for personal consumption. This was brought forward by Councilmember Henson. There is no ordinance addressing this. Councilmember Henson looked at a possible, at something that permitting this. We had extensive discussion from council members. We asked the Law Department to bring this, bring back a draft ordinance next meeting, and the motion was presented by Councilmember Henson, and I will move this forward. A motion by Councilmember Henson directing the Law Department to draft an amendment to the ordinance disallowing slaughter of livestock not including foul within urban service boundary without a permit, seconded by Councilmember Feigl, and passed without dissent. Now, I move this forward.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
And we'll bring that motion, or that draft will come to the next council, their next Service Committee, and we'll look at it then. And then, the second item on the agenda of the Service Committee was the sign ordinance that we've...
Mayor. I don't think we have a quorum.
We don't have a quorum. We just voted.
It appears we're close. We, we have... All right, since some question has been raised with regard to the efficacy of the last motion, Councilmember Ellinger, you want to make that again?
I will make that motion again, yes, sir. I move forward a motion by Councilmember Henson directing the Law Department to draft an amendment to the ordinance disallowing slaughter of livestock not including foul within the urban service boundary without a permit, seconded by Councilmember Feigl, and passed without dissent. So, moved.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Ellinger has made that motion. Councilmember Gordon has seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. And as I said, this will be a draft ordinance that we'll look at in the next Service Committee. The next item on the agenda was the sign ordinance, and we've had this issue with the sign ordinance in different areas, and it's basically down to three different issues with commercial, neighborhood, and temporary signs. This was brought forward by Councilmember Lane, and the problem with his issue was with the sign ordinance as it related to commercial and neighborhood associations. The sign regulations are the responsibility of the zoning ordinances, and they're amended by either implementation by the council or in the planning committee. We heard from Chris King, and we are also made aware that Tandy Patrick with Green Bondal McDonald, she spoke with us, and they have filed a tax, a text amendment on behalf of the neighborhood association. She said that the text amendment is asking that the real estate signs also be held in compliance. Her proposal also include use of property as to what signs would apply and definition of current commercial real estate. Chris King recommended against amending the whole entire ordinance and to review sign regulations specific to Article seventeen point six. He said ultimately, council would have to vote either up or down on any amendment to the ordinance and planning commission recommendations. A motion was brought forth by Councilmember Martin, and I move this forward. It was directing the Law Department to draft an amendment to Article seventeen six, permitted signs in all zones, changing wording from and to or, seconded by Councilmember Lane, and was passed without dissent, and also included two friendly motions from Councilmember Feigl making a friendly amendment to Mr. Martin's motion regarding neighborhood signs, and add to the motion shall not exceed ten signs and change not more than ten to seven days prior, and seconded by Councilmember Lane, passed without dissent, and also a friendly amendment by Councilmember Beer to amend two business days instead of five days of the event, seconded by Councilmember Feigl. This passed without dissent. I move this forward, Mayor.
Have a motion by Councilmember Ellinger, second by Councilmember McCord. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. We adjourned at two thirty-eight.
Thank you. We're now down to the update on the South Liam Construction Project.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is George Milligan. I'm the streetscape project manager. I'm here to give you an update on where we currently are on the project. That side is a little dark. It actually shows where we closed Avenue of Champions on July twenty-second to begin work on the intersection of Limestone, Winslow, and Avenue of Champions. Just to give you an oversight of what's happening in here, all of this work that you're looking at here is in that intersection. What you're seeing here is part of the duck bank, matter of fact, and part of the storm sewer system, the work that was going on in that intersection. The Avenue of Champions, we were able to reopen that intersection on August the thirteenth. We were approximately a week ahead of schedule, and we were two weeks before classes started at the University of Kentucky. This project has been split into basically two sections. We have the section that runs from Avenue of Champions to Maxwell Street and the section that runs from Maxwell Street on down to Vine Street. This first part of the presentation will address the portion from Avenue of Champions to Maxwell. As of the end of last week, the storm mainline construction is approximately ninety-five percent completed. The catch basins, the bottom sections of those catch basins, approximately eighty percent of those have been installed, and the contractor this week has started setting some of the top sections of those catch basins. This is a design-build project, and we just recently got the final elevations, which allows us to set those top sections of the structures. In that same section, the sanitary sewer main, we are, is approximately ninety percent complete. We are up to the Maxwell Street interchange with the sanitary sewer. Once the street closes, we'll go ahead and put the last manhole in. The contractors now dropped back, and as we went with this project, the sanitary portion of this project was a replace, was a renew in place, which meant we literally tore out the old sewer, put the new in the same location. At the time we did that, we temporarily tied back over the old service laterals from people's property lines. We are now going back in and replacing those laterals to the edge of the property. In the Maxwell Street section, from there to Avenue of Champions, we're approximately forty percent complete. The duck bank section, the duck bank, when we refer to the duck bank, this is everything that is going to handle all of what you see above ground now. All of your electric, your telephone, and your cable. The duck back construction has proceeded up past Keeneland Drive on this section. This project has a lot of custom-built concrete enclosures that are part of this project, and they are being manufactured here locally. And so, we have concentrated on getting the storm and sanitary boxes in first. We stopped this at Keeneland Drive and shifted to the other part of the project for a while. This week, we should be starting getting the structures back, so we'll be coming back into this area. The construction on that side is approximately thirty-five percent on the duck bank on the lower end. As I'm sure all of you are aware, tomorrow at nine a.m., we will close Maxwell Interchange, and we will close that interchange for approximately four weeks. On the lower end of the project, we started approximately the same time as we did at the Avenue of Champions with an additional set of crews. The contractor was able to bring in additional crews, so working both ways to assist in speeding up the project and finishing it in a more timely manner. On that section, we're approximately fifty percent complete on the storm line. We are up, we are now a little bit past Warren Court with that part of the construction. The sanitary is complete up through High Street. We're complete through that intersection. We are moving, we've moved crews in here now to work on some of the storm. The way this project is designed, it is, it is unique since we have all the utilities following each other. Where we are now in that narrow portion of it, we're going to have to get the duck bank in because it will be the deepest portion, then come back with our, the rest of our sanitary sewer. So, we are, the duck bank crew is now in that area. Down in that section, the sanitary sewer is approximately twenty percent complete. The sanitary is, has crossed the High Street intersection, and right now, they have stopped probably in front of the Soundbar and Hannah's. Again, the duck bank is complete up through the High Street intersection. This section is going a lot slower than the other end due to the narrowness of the streets. The duck bank on that end is approximately fifteen percent complete. High Street intersection was closed on August twenty-seventh for approximately three weeks. We were during that time, you can look and see, this is what the duck bank looks like in that intersection. If you'll look at the bottom right-hand picture of all those curves, that is just the communications portion. Down underneath that is a layer of concrete. Down underneath that is all of the ducts for the electrical system. In some places in here, we have more than twenty ducts in this duck bank. Some more of that intersection. Lower left is one of KU's manholes. That manhole actually sits right across the street from Bank of the Bluegrass. That manhole, you can kind of get an idea about the people working around it. That manhole is seven foot tall, six foot wide, and twelve foot long. It weighs thirty thousand pounds, and all the ducts come in and tie into those, the holes that you see on the side of that. We opened the High Street intersection last Saturday at approximately eleven a.m. We were about five days ahead of schedule on that opening. Problems and concerns in the area? Obviously, anytime you have a construction site, dust is a problem. In order to try to mitigate that, we are washing the streets three times a day, putting over twelve thousand gallons of water on those streets to minimize dust to the extent possible. I don't know how you do it anymore without, if we water them anymore, then we start putting water in the trenches, and we start having safety problems with the crews working because we get it too wet. Material storage? When the contract was bid, it was the intent that we would minimize to the extent possible the storage of materials on site. As the construction progressed, we found out that we were going to have to keep more items on site than what we'd originally planned. What you're looking at in that bottom picture are some of the concrete structures that are on site now that will be used in the Maxwell Street interchange. When you, when you look at the duck banks that we're putting in, if you think about it, you will see bundles of pipes sitting out there on the site. When you put in a seven- or eight-way duck bank, you're putting in seven joints of pipe at a time in a twenty-foot section, so it doesn't take very long to start going through those bundles of it. In addition to that, it was, the contractor felt that we were better off to stockpile here than to take and bring everything in in the day with multiple tractor-trailers coming in there adding to the congestion in the area. Access to businesses? We have attempted at all times to maintain at least one lane of traffic open for local access. In the evenings, I think with the exception of maybe two days, there was always one lane open on limestone, except for the time when the interchanges were totally shut down. This shows you a couple of them. The picture on the left is the lane opening from Maxwell looking down toward High Street. The one on the right is the opposite direction. One of the things that, once construction started, we wanted to try to make the property owners and everyone aware of where we were going. We have had weekly stakeholder meetings with the property owners. The contractor at that time gives an update on what he plans on... The contractor at that time gives an update on what he plans on doing for the next week. Initially, we had 20, 25 people. Now it's running, now it varies between 10 and 20 people. In addition, we've added additional signage at the request of the property owners. The two signs that you're looking at are both located at Maxwell and Limestone, showing what businesses are going each direction. I will tell you that a few of these signs have disappeared, and I imagine they're hanging in somebody's dorm room at the present time. Just some trivia. The report as of last week showed 24 calls to Lex Call from July 22nd through September 9th. That does not include calls that come directly to my cellphone. My cellphone probably averages five to seven calls a day. There have been 11,600 tons of rock backfill, equalling 464 truckloads, 1,042 cubic yards of flowable backfill, or 104 mixer loads. Almost all of that backfill that that shows there is all in the Avenue of Champions interchange. We were required to use flowable backfill by the state in that, in that intersection. And it became where we literally totally, almost totally opened that interchange and had a big pit and started working our way back up. In addition, you can see that there have been approximately three miles of conduit installed to this point. The significant fact about that, there's three miles of pipe in the ground. The project is only 2,000 foot long. That basically concludes the report on it, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions? Councilmember Lawless.
Thank you. I have a copy of the contract here with ATS and their site management plan and several things, and I attended the meeting where they made their presentation. In the site management plan, it says, they were planning an orderly work site at all times, minimizing dust and debris in the work area and daily cleanup. We would not store any material on the work site than we will use on that particular day. We would anticipate utilizing our shop on Jaggy Fox Way as storage area for the materials and supplies, and would be transported to the work site as needed. A water truck will be available for this project at all times, and water will be used in order to control dust. Work site would be cleaned up daily. Trash receptacles would be made available on-site and emptied. They also said that they would not store their heavy equipment on-site. What can we, the city, do to get them to fulfill that? Because I go down there a lot, and ATS is not fulfilling that part of this contract.
As I addressed in my presentation, it became, once we started construction, it became obvious that it was not feasible to not store materials on the site. Again, when they submitted that, it was a plan, and the plan didn't work as they proposed it. So we had to make some changes on the site in order to accomplish that.
So, I mean, I've been there when there were 16 to 18 pieces of heavy equipment on a non-work site.
I'm going to have to go back and look. I do not ever, I do not remember the section where it said that equipment would be removed from the site. It is, and I will tell you, from a construction standpoint, that is absolutely impossible to do. In order, in order to accomplish that, it would mean that probably every, every day, you would have to bring in eight, well, using your number, 16, you would have to bring in 16 Lowboys tractor-trailers and load that equipment out, and then the next morning, bring it back in. And we also, we have an ordinance that only allows us to come into the downtown area with that type of equipment during certain hours.
Since we paid a premium to them for this kind of thing, and it was decided by them it wasn't feasible, what recourse do we have as a city?
I'm not the person to ask, I'm sorry. I'm the project manager. That's out of, out of the scope of my, of my responsibility.
The other issues are, they were going to do traffic-controlled signage, and like when High Street intersection was closed, the signage wasn't very good as far as letting people know that they, like in the evenings, they could turn left there, go up Upper, and turn left on High, and get to the parking lots to access those businesses. There weren't any signs to indicate that at all. And, you know, that was the responsibility of ATS, and the signs that did go up went up several days after the project started, after multiple calls. And, again, we're paying a premium for these things, and ATS isn't doing what they said they would do.
You are correct that that signage went up. That signage was not part of the detour plan and everything. Once you and I had the conversations about those, those signs were ordered. It takes a while to manufacture those signs, and we're adding signs today. Still, as people in the corridor request, we've, at the last stakeholders' meeting before the, when we talked about the Maxwell Street closure, we asked everyone what additional signage you thought. We do have a couple of sign requests from Beth Hannah and suggestions, which are very good requests, and we're going to implement those. We will not get them implemented by tomorrow, but we'll get them implemented, you know, as fast as we can.
The signage and the traffic control that ATS promised and that we're paying for, it's not like they didn't know that street was going to be closed, so...
The signings they provided is what they normally provide on a construction project, and this is not a normal construction project. Once we made the request for the additional signs, they are providing them.
There's, well, a sign never did go up saying that you could turn left on Upper.
I know. I have the sign now, and unfortunately, by the time we got it, we'd opened the street back up.
And the barricades with the little flag guys in front of, at Martin Luther King, not letting people know that they could access the church parking lot or the transit center parking lot with a big arrow pointing, "Turn left, turn left, turn left."
And we did address that by adding additional signage there that says transit center parking. Matter of fact, the signage is still there. Again, we had one of those stolen over the weekend, and we're moving another one down, and we've ordered one to replace it. The one thing we did find on using a flagman at that intersection, we found out that it was causing more problems than it was doing, than it was helping. Once we removed the flagman and let the signage try to do its thing, we found that the people, we found that the people would work it out, could work it out. The one problem we did have is when we got several cars, might be all going to the church lot, so everybody behind them thought they could come that way, too.
Well, I think proper signage would be helpful in that instance, saying, "This is to access these businesses only."
The normal, that is not normal signage. One of Beth Hannah's requests was the fact that we add to our road-close signs, that right now, they say road-close, local access. She has requested, I think Friday she requested, that we add the signage that says local business is open, and we're going to have those signs made and added to those sign boards.
Yeah, and we had talked about that, too.
Yes.
And again, that's ATS's responsibility, and we have, like I say, we're paying, it's not a normal project, and we're paying, we're not paying a normal price for it. And that, that concerns me. The other thing that concerns me is, they talked about they would cease work at 10 o'clock, 10:00 PM. What can we do to get ATS to put an extra shift on there to speed this along? Because they're, they're stopping sometimes at 4:30 or 5:00. And I talked to one of the workers one day, and I said, you know, "I thought you all were going to work till, you know, 8, 9, 10 o'clock." And he said, "Oh, we work till 7 or 8 every night. Yesterday was the first day." But I've been down there many, many times in the evening, and they're not working until the 10 o'clock. So can you negotiate with ATS to put extra shifts on there? I mean, I know they don't want their workers to have 14-hour days, that that might not be safe, but there are certainly a lot of people out of work right now that they could hire to do this.
What we have found is that after approximately 5:30 or 6:00, we cannot get materials.
Wow, they're held up in the street.
Everything that, everything that I have to have, all of the conduits and the Duck Banks are the main example of this, when I excavate, and when the contractor excavates and puts the pipe in the ground, before we can do it, before we can backfill that or anything else, we have to encase that pipe in concrete. Concrete you cannot stockpile on-site, unfortunately, and the concrete plants shut down early. The other portion of that is, we could be opening more trench. We don't want to open the trench because of a safety standpoint. Some of these trenches are even too wide to plate, and if you open more than a couple of 100 foot, of 100 foot of trench, I don't know if there's enough plates in Lexington, but, so it, it became that standpoint. There are some times when they have shut down at 4:30 and 5:00, and it's because of the fact that to proceed further would mean they would have trench open. They've had days, last Friday, they worked till about 7:30 or 8:00 with the idea of, we took and started digging in front of Hannah's after she closed at 2:00 in order to, to be out of the way, in order to make that safe, because you had the Soundbar opening at 4:30. In order to make that safe and backfill all of that, we worked that late, in addition to getting the Soundbar back open.
It's hard for me to understand with the amount of work that's going on and that needs to be done, that some of it couldn't be done after 4:30 or 5:00, and couldn't be done until 10:00. And what I guess I'm asking from you is, can you negotiate with ATS to get extra workers there to work later?
In my professional opinion, it is not going to be beneficial to us at this time. We are better off adding additional crews during the workday that we're working. As part of that, we have already had discussions with ATS and one of their subcontractors. As when we start the Maxwell Street portion tomorrow, they will be bringing in an additional crew to do that, to increase the production that way. Part of the problem on this, and this is the Duck Bank, because right now, that happens to be the key to everything, is all of these pieces tie into those concrete structures that I discussed earlier, and until we get delivery on those structures, it's not feasible to try to put pipe in to get to them, to make it line up, to get to the structures. But we are, there is, to answer part of your, there are extra crews being added as work allows. With this project, as I think we explained initially, while it's different than anything that's ever been tried, one crew has to get so far up the street before the next crew can start. And then that crew has to get so far up the street before the next crew can start. If something happens to one of those crews and they get bogged down, then we're bogged down. That, part of that is why we were working this project from both ends at one time.
Also, the dust mitigation. I know that lately, there've been, they've been doing more trucks up and down, but apparently, they're using a different kind of truck right now?
We have a truck, the truck that's being used has got a problem with one of the nozzles on it, and there's a part on order to fix it. They're having to, they're having to make more trips to accomplish the same thing.
But squirting water into some of the businesses, like under their doors, and that's a new problem.
That's the first I've heard of it.
I just found out about that also yesterday.
That's, that's the first I've heard of it. One of the things that we were trying to do with that is, we were really putting some pretty heavy pressure against the curbs in order to wash that, whatever dust and gravel down there. As you get into that lower section, unfortunately, there are no curbs. It rolls right up, and we'll, we'll bring that to the attention of the contractor.
And then, High Street is really essential, and it's not being done very frequently or even daily, which means when it is done, it's just massive mud. So if you could address that with ATS, and maybe get back with the council, or get some signed documents of how they're going to correct some of these things that they're not doing, that they said they would do, that would be really helpful.
I get a daily, I get a weekly log from ATS on what their watering schedule is and what they, what they have performed. There are, there are times, most of the time, either the inspector, or myself, or the engineer are on-site when they do it. We are aware that at the beginning, there were some problems with the way they were portioned down High Street. We're hoping that that's going to be mitigated now that we've got the street back open, and once we get it all cleared off, we think that, that's going to help also.
Well, I mean, like I say, we're, we're paying an awful lot of premium money because they made these promises, and I was in the meeting when they did the presentation. And also, it would be easier to have, if they could store some of their equipment off-site, and there's a fenced area across from Good Sam that I think they're, do they have access to that?
That is, that is their fenced area.
Okay, and so...
And it, and it's...
They can't...
And it's pretty full.
Well, I've got, I haven't seen it pretty full. I've got a picture of it pretty empty, and trucks lined up. And so, you know, that's the expectation. It's right there on the street. That's what they promised they would do. I can't imagine it could take that much time to drive those giant bulldozers and trucks into that fenced area, and then that would help with, you know, trucks and fire trucks and that kind of thing getting down there if there was an emergency. But that's, that's what we paid them for. That's what they said they'd do, and we need to hold their feet to the fire and make sure it gets done.
We're attempting it. We will address that with them and see, put what equipment we can put in that yard. We will, we'll see to it that it's put in that yard so that yard is full every night.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like a written update, if you would, please.
More than happy to.
If you don't mind, Councilmember Lawless, I would like to address a couple of issues, or a couple of the things that were brought up. One was the storage on the street. Would just like to make it clear, you saw the number of dump trucks of gravel that were coming in there. All these structures are delivered on tractor-trailers. And whenever we started balancing the issue of storing on the street, plus what had to come in there on a daily basis, it seemed to make very good sense, if they could maintain local traffic, a continuous lane, except for when there was a complete lane closure like High Street and now Maxwell Street, that if, if they could maintain access to business and the local traffic, which they have done, that in order to mitigate as much of the traffic issues outside of the project as possible, that it made good sense to us. So, if you're looking for somebody who, who you need to speak with about the storage and the decision to let them store, it's, it would be me. I would also want to address the, the issues with trying to make this project go faster. I would also want to address the issues with trying to make this project go faster. This is not something that we haven't thought of. We began working with utilities well over a year ago now to try to build a project that once we got to the point that could be done in a compact amount of time. And we have, we have the commitment at this time of those utilities to support this. And we have seen things done on this project that do not occur in a normal project. We have seen a fantastic commitment from those utilities. When you're talking about this construction, you're not only talking about trying to move our contractor faster, you're asking for more from those utilities than we're getting today. And that would, that would be very difficult to get from those folks. There is a huge commitment by that group to help us get this project done as quick as we can. One of my major concerns, because I don't have those utilities under contract, was would that commitment be there after working with these folks, keep them in lockstep for a year's time to get this project done for these people in a timeframe that was very compressed compared to other projects with this much underground construction? And we have seen that, but I have very big concerns about having our contractor go faster than the utilities can support. We have the gas company coming in and doing relocations whenever things are encountered. Sometimes on other projects, that may take weeks or months before you wait on, they're setting poles days after we identify design issues. It is truly amazing, and I have to commend those utilities for their support. But I want everybody to understand, if we try to move this faster because we think we can dig the ditches faster, we could lose that support from those utilities or be ineffective because they cannot support this project at the speed we went. And whenever we designed this project, we designed it to have the underground constructed by a certain point for the wiring of the ductwork to be, take a certain amount of time. We're on track to accomplish that. There will be some contracts coming in for the wiring up of that conduit. And I just want to emphasize that it's not just our contractor that's involved here. And what I see our contractor doing is managing this process and managing the utilities as we ask them to do. If you recall, in that meeting, I spoke directly to the vice president of ATS and said, I don't have a contract with these utilities. It would be my expectation for you to manage the construction that they need to do and get them, have a gap for them and get them in and get them out. And they have done that for us. So it, I know this is, this is a very difficult project for those who live, work, and have a business on that corridor. To this point, I am very pleased with the progress. We have had to make some decisions that weren't in the original contract. Some of the designs aren't exactly the way they are, but I don't think that's unusual for a construction project of this magnitude that takes place in a road that's as old as South Limestone. So I just wanted to make those points for the council.
Anything further, Councilmember Lawless?
I just want to know if we're getting some money back since they're not doing it.
Councilmember Lang?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of really quick questions, and sort of a short answer would be fine. And I don't know whether the Commissioner would like to address this or Mr. Milligan would. The first question is that some of the businesses along Limestone came in and asked if it would be possible to go to a 24-hour day construction process in order to expedite the construction. And I believe you've addressed that and some of the things you said earlier, but is this feasible to do or you don't feel like that's a good strategy for the construction?
I don't feel like it's a good strategy. The Commissioner may have a different opinion.
I would, I would just like to say, as I said before, that this project can't, can't proceed at a faster rate unless it can be supported by the utilities. It's not just that construction project. And it would, it would require at this point a sit-down with every utility to see what they could do, because you can't, you can't move forward with all but two. If they need to be on-site at 3 o'clock in the morning to make a decision, then they have to be there before that construction can proceed. So it's those types of things that will cause issues. If you run into something in the middle of the night, you run into a piece of pipe that was not marked or whatever, you can't just cut that out of the way. The utilities have to come and investigate that. And those types of things are being supported very well, but would become a problem if we begin to go into some, like 24-hour days. We also have residents on, from Maxwell on down, we also have Holmes Hall that is full of students and a hospital that's full of patients as far as running hole rams, running equipment, backup beepers, working. There are some issues with working there at night.
Okay. Is there any additional effort?
Round-the-clock work or would want that, but...
I think that Councilmember Lawless was suggesting maybe not to go 24 hours, but maybe have, extend the hours for a few hours in the evening. Is that what you're suggesting too? That may be a scheduling error too, a good issue. Could you maybe address that just very briefly?
Again, again, that is controlled by material availability and really is controlled by concrete.
All right. The other question I had, is there anything that you feel like we could do to mitigate the disruption to the businesses along Limestone? Because I too am concerned about them. Do you have any ideas or anything that we could do to help them out?
I really don't. The one thing we have attempted to do during this project is at least maintain all the sidewalks open so there is access. Probably the worst case of doing that was today because of the fact of we had to make a change in the design in the field and we're having to go up the sidewalk with the electric conduit. And right now, we are directly in front of Soundbar and Hannah's, as I mentioned during the presentation. I know that in order to try to help these people, I know the contractors, people, they've taken their, taken their trash down for them, they've carried their groceries in for them. We were walking people around some of the construction equipment today to get into Hannah's. But we're aware of it and to the extent possible, we're trying to make that type of access. This section of it that we're in right now is the most difficult portion of it because it, when you saw the numbers that I gave you earlier where I was showing 80 and 90% on Maines on the Maxwell Street and to Avenue of Champions and 15 and 20%, the crews started at the same time, coming both ways. It's the difficulty in the narrowness of the street, trying to maintain some of that access for local businesses. When we've had dump trucks in there where we've had a lane blockage and somebody needs to come in, you know, we've stopped to move construction equipment to do that.
And I think you all addressed this too, but I just want to ask this again. How would you rate the overall performance of your general contractor and your electrical contractors?
We're very, very pleased. You know, we opened Avenue of Champions, we opened it early, we've opened High Street early. We're basically pretty well done with this section from High to Vine with the exceptional Water Company going in down through there. Performance-wise, I mean, from my standpoint, I'm very pleased with them.
Is there a line to send the tunnel for the businesses there where the, most of the excavation will be done and mainly be running the underground utility lines and stuff? And there won't be that much major equipment or stuff stored on site? How far out would that be?
The present schedule shows with substantial completion of the underground portion of it by mid-November.
Okay. Does that mean in November, things will be better there for access and travel through the...
It will still be a construction site. It will still be signed for local access, but obviously by then, hopefully all the material better be, better be gone, better be in the ground. And that equipment should be gone because at that point in time, it becomes the responsibility of the utility companies to come in and pull their cabling and those type of things. And it's a different type of equipment.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have really, George, three areas of questions. One has to do with the, with the sequencing of the shifts. Your comments earlier about the multiple shifts or the efficiency of that. Another question have to do with, or comments have to do with the financial side of the project. First, for context, I voted against this, the resolution for this contract for three reasons. I said at the time, it was the process that was a design-build project in an, for work that is rarely if ever done under a design-build contract basis, the priorities and the price. So the reason that I voted against the project then, and I said I wouldn't do this in my own business this way, and I couldn't endorse it for this project. So that's the context. You've said tonight that, or this afternoon, that you didn't feel like it was appropriate for, that the, that the concrete plant is not open after 4 o'clock and that was a reason not to accelerate or not to add multiple shifts. I was told the other day that, that I've, since I've been active in the construction business, that I have more than 2,000 projects under my belt. I have never seen a project that could not be improved and that could not be accelerated. I want to say that again. I have never seen a project that could not be improved or that could not be accelerated. I was reading recently the story of the building of the Brooklyn Bridge in the 1850s, and that was a very complicated project. And it was a whole lot more complicated than what we have here. So I think it's really wise of us not to be extravagant in describing the difficulties of this project, because there are many companies and many people who engage very tough projects and in fact tougher than this one. So I still think that we can look and need to consider anything which will accelerate the project and not compromise the project. That can be done. Mike, I understand the issues that you described associated with the utility companies. I think utility companies have a pretty good record of hearing authority figures suggest that they need help and that they need to perhaps work a little harder. And so I just encourage, encourage that. We know that these businesses, I don't think that they're coming here just to demonstrate. I think that they're coming here because they are actually suffering and struggling in this environment. And hence, we said from the beginning that we did this project under this unusual model, design-build, because we wanted to protect the businesses and get the project done as quickly as we could. So we still believe need to hold that touchstone in mind. And if we hear the pain and the difficulty, then we need to examine how we can improve and execute more efficiently and arguably faster. Okay? So that's one thing. And I don't want to move on to that prematurely because I think that's a very big deal. And I'm not satisfied that it can't be done. The second thing though, I'd like to ask about is the price and the accounting on the project. We've had no update on the numbers. Is there any update on, let's see, we've, the project's been underway now for a couple of months, so have there been, have you received invoices from ATS?
We have received one invoice that we have paid from ATS. It was the one that had all their mobilization, demobilization on it and the first, it had the first five weeks of construction on it. There will be change...
What was the, what was the, what was the amount of the first invoice?
The, after retainage had been taken out, it was $2.4 million.
You started to say something about change orders.
There will be change orders coming. One of my addressed in the presentation is the flowable fill. After this project was bid, when we asked for our permit from the state to do Avenue of Champions...
You might want to explain what flowable fill is.
Flowable fill, normally when you backfill a trench, you backfill it with gravel and compact it and then put your concrete cap on it and then your blacktop surface. Flowable fill is a self-compacting, very weak-strength concrete, basically is what it is. It's a, it's a sand, fly ash, and low-percentage concrete mix that goes in the trench as a liquid and it sets up and compacts so that you don't have shifting.
That was, and as I recall, looking at the bid documents, flowable fill was a unit price, it was offered as a unit price...
That is correct.
And an addition. So that will be an addition to the contract that was not...
The units will be an addition to the contract.
Okay. So, help me if I'm wrong here, but I believe that the contract is a unit-price-based contract.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So how many, what's the method of monitoring or confirming the unit prices?
Not sure I understand your question.
Well, on a unit-price contract, the contractor will bill on a basis of units put in place, material put in place. So what is, do you have staff on-site confirming the units that are being billed?
Yes, yes, I do.
Who is that?
We do. There is Terry Justice, who's an inspector with the city, and myself are both there on items like flowable fill and those type of items.
No, I'm talking about the, the, the main contract. That's a unit cost, it's a unit-price-based contract.
The units are verified daily.
So that's...
By measurement, by measurement and physical count.
It's not strand, it's not, it's your doing?
Yes.
Okay.
There is, there is a full-time, there's a full-time city inspector on-site in addition to myself.
Okay. So are those units consistent with what was estimated? Is this 2.6 million? Are we in line or not in line?
It, right now is varying and we're working, there's over 300 unit items in this thing and based out into four different categories, we're finding that there are units where we know our quantities are going to exceed, we're finding there's units that we're not going to use at all. And now we're trying to evaluate that at this time to see where we actually are.
Think it would be wise to consider an independent estimate for the project, and I want to recommend that we do that. So right now, just to confirm that we're not, we are not using an engineering firm to confirm the quantities. You guys are doing that on a daily basis?
We're using, we're using a city construction inspector from the Department of Engineering.
Okay. Well, what I, and what I'd said earlier was I think it would be wise for us, it would help us certainly to understand how much we are spending as we move along in the project and would also help us confirm that the, that the price that we're paying is a reasonable price. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Blues?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Milligan, with regard to your point that, and Commissioner Webb made this as well, that the, you... Webb made this as well, that the, you, the general contracting work had to be coordinated with the, with the utilities company's work, will there be a point, you know, further on in the project when that work will be done and, or nearly completed, and will permit acceleration of the project, added hours, or whatever might be, might be?
What actually, what actually is happening at this time, because of this being a design-build, we are coordinating with the utilities almost on a weekly basis, that before we go into any major section like an interchange, we bring them all out, and we physically paint what we're going to actually do in that interchange. Then, we go ahead and put that section of pipe in. The coordination between the utilities and our contractor, up and beyond that, is things that we encounter when we're excavating. Once we finish putting the underground portion of the system in, which should be sometime in mid-November, we actually turn that portion of the system over to the utilities. And as the commissioner said, you know, they've been, they've worked very great with us up to this date, but at that point in time, it becomes up to them to pull the materials and pull the conduits through and do the tie-overs. The general contractor during that period of time will, will be doing minor stuff, maybe doing some curb work and that type of thing. But to the extent, once we pass that November 15th date, the extent of being able to speed up the project will be dependent upon the utilities' ability to pull their cable and the ability of the utilities and, and the construction team and design team to work with the neighborhood to do the tie-overs from the above-ground to underground utilities. Because we can't take the poles down until everybody is crossed over to the, to the new underground system. I don't know if I answered your question.
That's very helpful. At that stage, and during that stage, will there be greater accessibility to the, you know, to the businesses and residences along the?
There should be greater, but realizing the fact that a lot of it will still be, will still be gravel roads. It will be, it's still going to be a construction site. But at that point in time, then most of that major heavy equipment that Ms. Lawless talked about will leave the site.
And that stage of the project, the pulling through of the wires and so on, what's your estimate on how long that, that will take?
The schedule at the present time has that going from mid-November to the end of March. That the schedule presently shows all the poles to be down by the end of March.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Lawless.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess what I'd like to ask is, has ATS done any negotiation with the utilities to see if they could accommodate a faster schedule? And secondly, nobody's saying that the guys aren't doing a good job seven or eight hours a day. What we're saying is, can we have more guys doing an outstanding job, more hours? I understand what you're saying about coordinating with the utilities, but I would request that ATS see if they can coordinate with the utilities, and if they are, in fact, willing to move faster.
We'll be more than happy to pursue that, and we will give you a written report back on it.
Thank you.
Anything further from Mr. Milligan? Thank you all very much. Takes us down to council reports. If you'd like to make a report, please indicate by logging on. Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve the Neighborhood Development Fund list.
Have a motion, but Councilmember James second, but Councilmember Ellinger to approve the NDF. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, David Jarvis was going to give an update. Some of you may have heard of the building collapse at Third and Warnock, and it closed off traffic for quite a bit. So, I wanted to give an update to any travelers around that Third Street area, and also just to hear the update on what's going on with the building.
Thank you, Councilmember James. As you may be aware, there was a building at 524 East Third Street that collapsed sometimes, partially collapsed sometimes Sunday night, early Monday morning. We've issued an emergency demolition order on the building, give them 24 hours, tear the building down. The owner has hired a contractor. The contractor's on-site now. The building should be down by the end of, tonight, early in the morning. We've closed one lane of Third Street off to accommodate any rubble or debris that may come from the demolition of the building. The building had previously been condemned by code enforcement for some structural issues. I think the collapse was partially caused by the roof leaks and that sort of thing. It's a very, very old building down on Warnock and East Third, so.
You mentioned that one lane will be available. Is that for the east and west traffic, or?
I believe so. I believe that there's traffic control down there that allow traffic east and west. I was down there yesterday, and traffic was flowing out, but I didn't see anything coming up Third from Midland.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Mayor, I wanted to bring that to our attention because it, you know, it's important that we acknowledge that these vacant, abandoned buildings are hazard to our city, hazard to our constituents. And not only do they just sometimes look bad, but there's, there's a reason why we should be concerned about vacant buildings. So, just wanted to point that out. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stenett.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to give one announcement. The Eastland Parkway Neighborhood Association will be meeting their regular meeting time on next Tuesday. So, just want to, September the 22nd, at 6:30 at Christ Center Church. So, just want to make sure those folks know about that next meeting. And then also, Mayor, we seem to have a change in our HR process in terms of how people are filling out the applications for employment here. Seems to be some confusion with an online version versus a written version, and are we accepting both? Can we get some type of clarification? A lot of councilors are getting calls about this process, about what's going on and what we're going to do to solve it. Are we still taking both electronic and written applications at this time? I don't know if anyone's here that can address that. But there's a lot of jobs that just went on, online and are posted, and some people have been told, according to what their experience has been, that we only take online applications now. I know that's not true.
I'm fairly confident it isn't, but let me see if Mr. Duhwara Ha can shed a little light on that situation.
Nice pronunciation. Good job.
Well, I believe we're taking both currently, online and forms, but I have to clarify that. Anyone who needs to come in, we have some kiosks set up down at the lobby and at different locations, and even at HR, to fill those forms online. All the processing is going to happen in our new HR system through PeopleSoft, so we have to get it. And that's pretty much what's happening right now.
Are there instructions as people fill out applications online, how to save it on there, how to transmit documents such as licenses and other accreditations so that they can save that information? Is that easily understood on there?
Yeah, I mean.
I don't know if you've been through the process.
I've been through the process. Anything you need to, they're, they go in as attachments. You can fill out a resume online, or if you have an attachment, you can upload that. The only feature that's not available now, we're working on that, is to print your application. It's, it's a customization, and, you know, PeopleSoft is delivered as not, you know, where you don't print it because they want to save on printing or so.
And are people having to fill out an application for each individual job, or can they fill it out one time and then check all the jobs they want to apply for?
They fill it out one time, and they're able to manage it. Their record's on file for about a year, and they can apply for any job by checking the job.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion and a series of announcements. The motion is to schedule a confirmation hearing for Finance Commissioner nominee Linda Rumke for 6:00 PM October 1. That's 6:00 PM October 1. So moved.
Have a motion and second to schedule confirmation hearing October 1st at 6:00 PM. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Commissioner Kelly, if you would relay that time and date to Ms. Rumke, I'd appreciate it.
And I have some announcements of neighborhood meetings, starting with tonight's Western Suburb Board Meeting. That's at 7:00 PM at 645 West Short Street. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, September 16, is the Woodward Heights Neighborhood Association Picnic. That's at 6:30 PM at 304 Madison Place. If necessary, the rain date will be September 17. Main dishes will be provided. Attendees are encouraged to bring side dishes. I think the weather will be good. Hope to see a good crowd out for that event. Thursday night, September 17, at 7:00 PM, Spiegel Heights Neighborhood Association meets at Antioch Church on Ferguson Street. Then, on Saturday, September 19, starting at 10:00 AM, the Wirtner Tandy Historic Highway Marker Dedication will be, will be held at 642 Main Street. I think other officials will be there that, that morning. And this is, this is the dedication of a highway marker for a celebrated African-American in Lexington, and hope to see a good, a good crowd out for that. At 2:00 PM that, that afternoon, the Highlands Neighborhood Association will be having their annual picnic at the Highlands Park on Mark Avenue. And then, Monday, September 21st, the Windburn Neighborhood Association will meet at 6:30 PM in Martin Luther King Park Community Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Three thanks. First, I want to congratulate Mr. McCord on finishing his half-marathon in Chicago this weekend. He's still in one piece, looks good. Congratulations. Second thing, on Saturday, the 19th, there is a juvenile diabetes walk to cure diabetes. I'm kind of near and dear to my heart because my sister's been a juvenile diabetic for 40 years, and if you'd like to come out on Saturday, the check-ins at 8:30. The walk starts at 10. It's a 5K, and you can join along with us, and it's, you can walk with us under Stacy Stompers. That's my sister. And then the third thing, next Saturday, the 25th of September, starting at 5:30, there will be a fall fling, cruising with the Springs, the McConnell Springs, summer, or fall, spring. It's $50 per person. It's a supper, music, dancing under the stars, live auction, and raffle to raise money for McConnell Springs. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Feigl.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, for the past few months, we've been experiencing some difficulties in the Chevy Chase neighborhood, the commercial area, because of the parking meters. And there has been an ongoing study, and recently, this study was released that indicated that the old parking meters would be removed. And I know that we have some merchants who are very, still very unhappy with that, very concerned about what that is doing to their businesses. And former councilmember Bill Farmer is here tonight to share some of that with you. So, I would ask him to come to the podium.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bill Farmer of 821 Euclid Avenue. I, as always, appreciate your service, and especially today, its length. Like merchants on South, on South Limestone, I'm here on behalf of the small businesses in Chevy Chase to ask for your help with the Parking Authority and its recent decision to remove traditional parking meters in Chevy Chase. I'm looking for the council and the government's help with the Parking Authority so that we might designate some areas as exempt from the new parking system, and to help local businesses. And I think that's the important point. If you want to feel my pain, you, you watch people get out of the car in front of your place of business and look at a pre-existing meter that they can put a quarter into, and signage that points them down the street to a, a new parking system. And rather than walk down the street or understand they can even put the quarter still in the meter, they get back in the car and they drive off. And I, I think there is a better answer for us in Chevy Chase. And if you look at the, and I want to thank Councilmember Feigl for forwarding this presentation slide to me, you know, the Parking Authority went out of its way to put a lot of signage out there to drive people to the specific parking, mechanical parking machines. And as you can see, from March finally through August, they finally got the, a little crossover in the amount of usage there. But I think that, as I may have said to you all once before, one size does not fit all. I know that when, when the council sets rates for certain things, they set aside a certain amount for people who can't afford those rates. I know when the council is working on a historic overlay, that part of what goes on in that process is certain properties has to be exempted from that overlay, and the council can or cannot help in that situation. And likewise, there's, there's always opportunity, I think, for the people to be heard over the authority. I think most disturbing to me while I've been here today was a conversation I had with the citizens' advocate. And I asked the citizens' advocate, could that office be of service to some merchants in Chevy Chase if they had a grievance with the Parking Authority? The citizens' advocate indicated to me that the understanding was that the Parking Authority was outside the purview of what the citizens' advocate could take action on. So, I've been to the Parking Authority and wasn't really afforded the opportunity to talk about this study before they passed on it this past week. I think there's still an opportunity for the people to be heard. And there's, there's no one complaining about the amount of parking fee. They're complaining about the loss of convenience in being able to walk from their car to a meter to a business and bike. And that's where I ask for your all's help. Sometimes, a commission or a board needs help from the council and the mayor to help the citizens. Thus, my plea for you today.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Feigl.
About one, okay. Actually, what I was going to ask the council, because I do think this is a very unique situation, and I was hoping that we might be able to put this into one of our committees to see, to study this issue, to see if there's a way that we can accommodate unusual or unique areas within the city and make some exemptions. So, I'm not sure which committee that would go into.
I'll leave that up to the members of the council. This one's a little bit twixt and tween because I don't think it would fall neatly into any one of the categories. It probably doesn't go into budget and finance, but among the others, there's some flexibility.
Services. Councilmember James.
I think, I think, Commissioner, I think Councilmember Ellinger was hiding back over here to avoid that, but that's probably a good, good choice, so.
Okay. Well, I would move to that we put this issue into the Services Committee to do some research and find out if there's a way that we can accommodate unique areas within the commercial area of the city.
Fairway. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second, Vice Mayor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor, Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this goes back to our discussion about authorities and the role of particular authorities. So, I, I think I'll support putting it into committee because it obviously is an issue that needs to be talked about. But again, I think we need to clarify the term authority, and we did this with, with DDA, the Downtown Development Authority, Parking Authority. There are issues that come up related to our citizens, and what avenue is supposed to occur, what's supposed to be, the way we voice our complaints. So, I'll support it going to committee, but I do feel like we need to research that, the ordinance that establishes the authority and what their role is and what our role is with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Feigl.
Just one other thing. I would like to also request that the administration speak with Parking and ask them to delay removing the meters until we've had a chance to, to study this issue.
I'll be glad to make that request. The motion on the floor right now is the motion to refer to the Services Committee. Councilmember Blues.
I'm wondering whether that can be moved up on the agenda then, if, if, that would, that would be good. And I presume that we'd have a presentation from, from Gary Means and the Parking Authority for that.
All right. Those in favor then, Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Means was here earlier to, to discuss this matter. If council- Mr. Means was here earlier to discuss this matter, if counsel so desired, but he had to go to the board training session.
All right. All right. The motion on the floor is to refer to the Services Committee. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of referring it? Please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Anything further? Councilmember Feigl.
No, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Lawless.
Thank you, Mayor. Several announcements. The Elizabeth Street, newly rejuvenated Elizabeth Street Neighborhood Association is having their meeting tonight at the church on Audubon and Forest Park at 7:00 PM. And so, anybody out there listening and would like to go, please do. I also wanted to mention, there are a lot of things going on this week and this weekend. Gallery Hop is this Friday night, and Mr. Seth Tuska today loaned the city government an incredible sculpture by his father, John Tuska. And he is also going to have things on display at the Kentucky Theater of his late father's artwork. Also, there's, South Lime is, a lot of the merchants on South Lime are going to have festivities and artwork and Irish dancers. There's going to be, so get on the website for Lex Arts and look at what's going on with Gallery Hop. It's going to be hopping. On a more serious note, there were some very tragic murders in our community this past weekend, one of which was around the corner from my house. Lisa Carr was brutally, brutally savagely murdered, and it was in broad daylight on Saturday afternoon. And many of the neighbors were out and about and witnessed it all. And we're a very close-knit neighborhood and Mintel area, and we're not accustomed to this kind of thing. And so, it's been very traumatic and very hard for a lot of folks. So I want to give an update to, if any of my neighbors are watching. I called, there was people wanting to get together and do something to promote some healing and a memorial service of sorts to her. And I called Officer Gaines, as God love him, I do a lot, and asked him if he could do something about helping us get a permit to block off the street between Walton and South Ashland, which is where the murder occurred. And he, and thanks to Mr. Witt in Traffic Engineering, I called this morning and got it today, and thank you so much. So that will be from 6:30 to 8:30 between Walton and South Ashland on Aurora. And if anybody's interested, please come by. The street will be blocked off. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to report?
I'm sorry. It's been a long day. That's Thursday. I got the permit today so we could do it on Thursday evening from 6:30 to 8:30. There's a council meeting that night, so I won't be able to be there. But that was a, so I was thanking them for being so timely and getting the permit, rushing that through. But thank you very much, Councilmember Ellinger, for reminding me. I didn't tell them when it was. Thursday night, 6:30 to 8:30.
Thank you. If there are no more reports, I have just a few quick things with regard to the mayor's report. First of all, to follow up on Councilmember Lawless's comment about Gallery Hop, I am really pleased that one of Seth Tuska's contributions to Gallery Hop will be in the mayor's office on this Friday evening. It is a piece of sculpture that is specifically designed for visually impaired individuals or blind individuals. So if you have friends or constituents who you think might be interested in that, it is a piece of sculpture where they can come and feel of it, and it's a pretty remarkable piece. Second, you have several boards and commissions nominations before you, as well as a board vacancies report for the fourth quarter. A motion to add those to the docket would be in order. I have a motion to Councilmember Blues and a second by Councilmember Ellinger. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Couple of other things. One is very short. On September 24th, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM here in the council chambers, we'll be having a neighborhood summit meeting for neighborhood associations and homeowners' associations. The primary focus of that discussion will be preparing our community for H1N1, and we feel as though there's an effective role for neighborhood associations to play in that. So please encourage your neighborhood associations to send their president or some other representative to participate. They can contact Mary Ann Blodgett in my office if they need additional information.
What was the time again, Mayor?
It's 6:30 to 9:00 on September 24th here in the council chambers. And last, let me yield the floor to Mr. Kelly for just a moment, who has an update on a couple of TIF-related issues.
Thank you, Mayor. As you are aware and probably remember, George Kocorian appeared here before the council to discuss his project that is being discussed on Angliana Avenue. And it's evolved beyond discussion. It's now a project. And it would be something that the council would need to take up relative to approving the TIF application and moving the process on to Frankfurt. There's a couple of things that will need to happen. One is that they will go to the Planning Commission, and they're scheduled for October the 8th, I believe, to be before the Planning Commission, make sure that the project is compliant from the Planning Commission's perspective. Couple of things that you need to think about is, with the first two TIFs that we've had and we've dealt with, there was the delegation process. I remembered the delegation process where certain councilmembers participated and was involved in, were involved in the evaluation of those two projects. Then they came back, made a recommendation to the council in whole. There was a lot of additional discussion, of course, after that recommendation came forward. With this project, we would suggest that perhaps the council might want to consider considering this project as a committee of the whole. This is a pretty straightforward project, and I think from the perspective of the council that if everyone hears the discussion at the same time, it might expedite the process. And anyone who can and wants to participate, of course, can do that. So that's one issue, and we would like to get that scheduled as soon as possible to get the process moving. The first thing you'll be asked to do is to make a determination that you do want to pursue this project and move forward with it. At that time, we would have the principals in the project discuss the project, talk about the public infrastructure projects, talk about the financials and the economics of the project, and so on and so forth. And Chris Westover is with us today, representing Mr. Kocorian, and John Ferris, who's providing technical assistance and done the economic analysis, is also here today. Should you have questions to those folks?
Let's see if we can resolve that issue. Would you prefer to send it back through the delegation process, or would you prefer to just deal with it as committee of the whole? A motion either way would be appropriate. Councilmember James.
Can we talk a little bit about how the recommendation for it to go to Cal as opposed to the same process? I mean, what is it that didn't work about the first route? And then maybe we could look at repairing that.
Well, I'm not sure that the first process, it's a matter of the first process not working. It's more a matter of, we have wrestled through some of those issues of first impression that came along with the first couple of ones we did. In that particular instance, we had the conversation before the delegation, then we wound up having extensive conversation before the council as well, so that everybody that wasn't in the meeting could be brought up to speed. So the thought was, maybe, given the fact we've done a couple of them now, it would be more expedient to simply bring it to the council and move forward with it on that basis. That said, if you have a preference to the contrary, it's not a big deal. Councilmember McCord.
It would be my sense, and I'll make the motion that we hear it as council of the whole. I mean, ultimately, we're going to all hear it, and, you know, it's not that we're taking a step away. I think that we would expedite. So I'd make the motion that we hear it as a council of the whole.
Have a motion. Second, to hear it as council of the whole. Any further discussion on that issue? Those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay. Note Councilmember James's dissent. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Then the next question would be, when would we like to schedule a meeting?
If we could let Ms. Langston take care of that.
Very good.
Let you all, whatever works.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Another item that we need to get clarification on and some understanding about relative before we initiate this project is the fees that are associated with processing these projects. As you recall, we had the projects, the first two projects, that were initiated under the new statutes. There's a fee for paying for the consultant. There's a fee for administrative costs associated with managing the project that's collected by the state. The state, again, as we discussed at that time, the state has no problem with the developer paying that fee. We are the project owner, but the money can come from the developer, both for the consultant and both for the administrative fee. Mr. Parsons, our outside counsel, has recommended that we ask the developers to pay this fee, that it's appropriate, it's what's being done in other communities, and that the community would be putting money at risk, that it should not be putting money at risk because you don't know if the project's going to ultimately come to fruition. I have a letter from Mr. Parsons that we just received, so I don't have time to pass it out to you, don't have copies, explaining why he thinks that's an appropriate thing for the community to do. Again, you're paying for, there has to be a consultant who verifies the original work, and then assuming that is acceptable, and the KIFHA board approves the project, in principle, then there's an additional $50,000 fee that is due immediately. We fully expect that the Phoenix Park Center Point Project will get final approval this coming Thursday, the 24th. And the Distillery District Project will get its first reading before the KIFHA board on the 24th. And we fully expect that to go well, and we expect that the distillery project, hopefully and likely, will be approved at the October meeting of the KIFHA board. There's a budget amendment on the docket today for your approval to authorize us to pay the administrative fees, which would be, for both of those projects, $100,000. The webs have offered to pay the $50,000 administrative fee for the Phoenix Park Courthouse And I expect that you will want us to pay for the distillery project unless you tell us differently. I was kind of assuming that, that's why we submitted the budget amendment to you. Having said that, how are we going to handle these going forward? And that's the question that needs to be addressed, and the developers need to know before we start this next evaluation.
All right. Councilmember Lane, and Councilmember Ellinger, and Councilmember.
My first question, just to refresh our memory.
Yes, sir.
If the TIF is approved and it's funded, does the $50,000 get reimbursed back to the developer of the TIF funds?
Yes, sir. If the TIF is approved and is successful and generates revenue, then both the consultant fee and the administrative fee are both recoverable by the developer.
Right. Well, you know, my thought is that when a developer comes into town and wants to do a deal, and this is a funding mechanism for them, you know, they should be at risk for the money, not the urban county government. Because if, you know, 20 people applied for TIFs, we'd have a million dollars' worth of liability there that we have to put the money up for. And since it is refunded upon approval of the deal, and essentially, the developer controls, you know, how the deal's structured and who the tenants are going to be and what the economics are, it seems to me that the appropriate thing would be to have the developer put the money up. Now, having said that, now I've recused myself on the Distillery District, and I think maybe we've already set policy on that, I'm not sure, and I know the webs have already paid. So maybe this would be a future-looking type of a proposition that we would ask for developers to fund it in the future.
That's what we're asking, that you make that decision going forward.
Councilmember Ellinger, and then Councilmember Lawless.
I think my questions kind of were answered. I was just trying to refresh it. On the distillery, what was, we used the economic development money, did we not, for $47,000? What was that for?
You did. That was to pay for the consultant fee. The webs had paid the consultant fee on the Phoenix Park Courthouse project. Mr. McNeese asked that the community pick up the cost of that consultant fee for his project.
Ms. Westover, could I ask you a question, my chance? Have you spoke to Mr. Kocorian about this issue?
No, Councilmember Ellinger, I have not. Mr. Kelly and I discussed this earlier this afternoon, and I understand what the issues are. I have not had a chance to get in touch with Mr. Kocorian about this issue, and we intend to discuss it with him at our earliest opportunity. This was a new issue that came up today.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Lawless, and then James, and Councilmember.
Actually, I was just going to make a motion that from this day forward, anybody that wants to apply for a TIF be made aware upfront what the cost to the developer will be for applying for the TIF and the consultant. So moved.
And that they'd be expected.
And they'd be expected to pay for it, yes.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Now we'll go ahead and discuss it further. Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't support that motion because although the webs have voluntarily said they would pay their portion, not everybody has that opportunity and that economic resource, and sometimes that's why people are trying to develop things, is to get, to improve that. We do very little compared to some other cities when it comes to economic development. And I think that's a little bit that we would be able to do, a little bit in addition to what we do right now, that can show our support of the project. There are opportunities for us to access funding. Community Development Block Grant has an opportunity within that to fund economic development opportunities in our city. We could apply for that and allocate that a budget line item. We could apply for that and allocate that a budget line item. We can, through our Economic Development Task Force, have money set aside to pay these particular fees. And we probably will have TIFs coming in the future where we'll need to help and support some groups that are applying for TIFs that don't necessarily help them individually, but help our city and help for economic development opportunities. So unfortunately, I mean, we've got very few of our council members here. I think it's a very inopportune time to really get a full discussion of this. But I won't support that. I think ideally, I mean, we can ask these individual people as they've come forward, and the people that have already applied, are you willing to pay it? Can you do it? That's two and three. But you're right, we could have more in the future. We can budget for it and look forward to that. We can set a limit. We can say, as a council, we'll support five TIFs per year, and that's our contribution to economic development. But I would ask council to reconsider that, and just, that's the little part that we can do. The developers putting a lot of risk out there and putting a lot of time and a lot of money in other ways, this is maybe minimal on their list, or maybe it's substantial. But it's the little bit that we can do as a city. Thank you, Mayor.
I've lost my list of speakers on the screen here, so Councilmember Blues, I know it was on there. We'll have to go with hands.
I agree with Councilmember James on this issue. It does seem to me, I do have a vague, vague memory of earlier discussions of this. And I think I remember correctly that, as stated in the statute, it's the government's obligation to pay these fees if the government wants to go forward with a TIF. And I certainly have no objection to a developer stepping up and volunteering to pay. But since a TIF project benefits not only the developer and, in many cases, makes the project possible, it also is a huge benefit to the community, to our, you know, to our tax base. We get back, the public gets back money that we otherwise would not if the project is credible and if it's successful. So, and the fee, as I understand it, when it does come back, it doesn't go back to the developer, it comes back to the government, I would gather, if we've paid it. Well, that would be incorrect. What we would do, and what we've done with, in the first instance with the webs relative to the Phoenix Park Courthouse project, we provided them with a letter indicating that this was a reimbursable expense to them under the TIF, and that would be repaid to them when the TIF is approved. And when the TIF starts to generate revenue, when the project is showing viability, then they would be reimbursed. Right. But that's if they pay it. But if we pay it, it comes back to us. Is that not? Well, it would come out of our share of the local TIF anyway. So, you know, we would be paying ourselves, in essence, but that's correct. Well, the question is, Councilmember Blues, is being able to front $100,000 per TIF when we don't have, you know, budgeted dollars to do that. And again, as a matter of practice, as an incentive for the developers, it's an additional incentive for the developers to be serious about filing for a TIF, pursuing a TIF, and then doing all that they can do to try to make the TIF successful and generate revenue. And when that happens, they get their money back. I appreciate that, and I understand that reasoning, but it seemed to us that, or seemed to me, rather, that we would have the same obligation. If we pay that money, we want to make sure that this is a TIF that has, you know, that has merit, that we can stand behind, that we are confident it will return our investment. So.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Feigl.
Thank you, Mayor. I would really prefer that we give this some thought, because I think what we need is some flexibility for those projects that are presented to the city that are in particularly blighted areas, projects that we feel would be more beneficial to the city. We might want to offer some additional incentives in that regard. So I would still, I would like to see some flexibility as we go through, rather than to make, you know, a firm decision that we will or they will. I just feel like we need that flexibility.
Councilmember Lane.
Yeah, just a couple more thoughts is that when the developers bring a TIF proposal to us, you know, and if we're going to end up voting yes or no to fund it, that means that we have to do all the due diligence, we have to evaluate their proposals. And in many cases, there's proprietary information, like who their tenants are going to be and what their credit is and all that. I feel like it puts a burden on the council to make a judgment on whether this is a viable deal or not, and we ought to let the developer take that risk. The other thing to consider is that the state could raise the fee for filing to $100,000, $150,000. I mean, the rate right now is the rate they've set, but that could change in the future. So if you set a precedent where we're going to underwrite this fee, then we may be locked into higher fees in the future also.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Blues.
Just one further point. It does seem to me that whatever we do, I think that the Kocorian project, the developer came into it with the understanding that the government would pay these fees. Since this is, as Ms. Westover just indicated, this is brand-new to, you know, to her, it does seem to me that we're, that we may be on the verge of changing the rules in the, you know, in the middle of the process, and that doesn't sit very well with me on this.
Mayor. Councilmember James.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion, which would actually go towards Councilmember Feigl's suggestion, which is we really need to, we need to investigate what would be the best route for this fee. I think we, it's clear that there are opportunities where it could be used as an incentive. If there's a project that council would like to support, and that is the barrier to that application being processed, that we would try to find a way to support that and to talk about in our budget discussions, or if we were willing to discuss in our budget, what are our economic development priorities, and where could we start budgeting for that? And if this could be an opportunity, even if it's saying, we'll support two TIFs a year, or something like that. But I'd like to offer a motion at this time to have a discussion at a committee of the whole regarding the administrative fees, or whatever it's called, related to TIFs.
Second.
The motion that Councilmember James is to substitute a new motion for the one presently on the floor, and the essence of it would be to conduct a discussion of the issue of administrative fees at the council of the whole meeting. And I heard a second from Councilmember Feigl. Any discussion on that motion to substitute? Councilmember Stenit.
Councilmember James, when you say committee of the whole, are you referring to our quarterly Cal meetings? Because right now, we're in a full discussion of the council at a work session. Is that the same type of meeting? Because that's what we're having right now. I didn't know if you meant work session, or?
And it really just meant whatever the same meeting, and they're having to discuss the TIF, whatever it is that, whatever meeting it will be that Rebecca's scheduling, we could have it at that discussion. Is that a committee of the whole quarterly, or is that a special call meeting?
It'd be special call at that point.
That would be appropriate.
I'm just trying to say, I don't want to wait the next quarter to have this meeting.
No, whenever that meeting would be scheduled, we can have that discussion either before or after we have the TIF discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Feigl.
And I think that, I think that would be appropriate, too, that we do it sooner rather than later. But at the same time, I would like for someone to provide for us some options on how we might be able to do this differently than to just say, we're going to pay or they're going to pay. Because I think we need some flexibility in that, and I'm not sure who that would be.
What communities, other communities are doing is that if it is a community-initiated TIF, and they go out and recruit developers to come into a particularly, perhaps, a blighted area, then the word you used, and I believe you did too, was incentive. And so in that case, those communities may say, as a part of the incentive, is that we will cover the administrative fees and the consultant fees. But when they are approached by a developer with a project, they are requiring the developer to front the fees with the understanding they will get them back if it's successful.
And the other reason I think that it might be more appropriate to take it to a committee of the whole is because we really don't have our full council here tonight, so it might, pardon me?
This is still a public meeting, and, you know.
Well, I know it's a public meeting.
People choose to leave, we can still make choices and votes.
If there's no further discussion.
It's public.
On the motion to substitute, let's proceed to vote. Those in favor of substituting for Councilmember Lawless's motion, a motion to conduct a discussion of this issue at the committee of the whole meeting, please indicate by saying aye. Those, no. I believe the motion carries. Let's go ahead and vote electronically, since we're into it. And the motion to substitute does carry by vote of seven to one. I suppose to be correct parliamentary, we need now, we need to vote on the substituted motion, unless there's more discussion. Those in favor, please indicate by voting aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. I believe that concludes all we've got on the mayor's report today. The last, yes, sir.
I'm sorry. There was one other item that was to be discussed today, and it was relative to the inversions. But since some of the principals who are most interested are here.
Unless there's some vehement objection, I submit, we ought to take that next time around.
But could we have sooner rather than later a presentation on inversion? We were originally scheduled to have one today.
We were. That's correct.
And it would be very helpful, because it's a complicated, and at least for one council member, very confusing, and I'd like to see where we are.
Let me give you two options. If you're really pressed for time for some reason, we could do it Thursday night, we could move to amend the docket now and do it then, or we could do it next Tuesday.
I'll take Tuesday.
Why am I not surprised? All right. We'll do that. All right. Anything further for Mr. Kelly? Any public comment on issues not on the agenda?
Any invitation to UK.
Yes, thank you. Let me just mention to you that if you haven't already, you soon will be receiving an invitation to go over to the main building at UK for a discussion of some of the things the University of Kentucky is doing in the way of economic development initiatives. And one of their leading contributors to the local economy, Coach Calipari, will be participating in that meeting, so you ought to be receiving something shortly about the details of the time.
Does anybody have the time?
I do not. Do you know?
On the date?
It's October the 7th at 3:00.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And that will be in the main building. The only person I have signed up to speak on issues not on the agenda was former councilmember Farmer, who's already spoken, so I think we're squared away. Does anybody else wish to address the council? Do I hear?
One issue, I think I saw that you're having a press conference tomorrow morning about UK and with the first home football game. Is this something that we'll get information about, or is it something that we need to know that?
Essentially, we're going to be holding a press conference tomorrow morning at Commonwealth Stadium to talk about some of the initiatives that we plan to implement this year to help protect some of the neighborhoods and the areas surrounding Commonwealth Stadium. We'll also have police, fire, traffic engineering, code enforcement, building inspection, maybe one or two other divisions represented. I can't, thank you. Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Stenit has moved to adjourn. Councilmember McCord has seconded that. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. The motion carries.